I was hoping to go to LA and visit my daughter because they're buying a house, but it doesn't seem to be working out. They're not moving now till the end of the month, and I have to quarantine for two weeks before I go back to DU. Do you, did she have to quarantine and do some stuff?
So they recommend, they highly recommended it, so we limited, you know, who she was around, obviously, the last couple of weeks. But they just did the temperature check and gave them 10 masks and said, limit who you are around. It's a scattered check-in, so she was with a group that was the first group to check in yesterday. Very, very well done. I mean, we didn't really run into anybody, so it was, it was well done. And there's people moving in now every day.
Yeah, that's how we're doing it. It's really spread out over like three days and get a 90-minute timeframe and you know, and no dawdling parents.
Yeah, we helped her get set up. It was, it was pretty efficient, actually, so.
That's good. These rooms aren't that big to be fussing over them.
We're pretty organized. I just, I dread the plane ride home. That's, I think, when it's going to hit me, but that's okay.
Are you there by yourself?
No, my husband's here.
Oh, yeah, he's with you, yeah, yeah. I have to tell you that every kid was hard for me. Maybe my second wasn't as hard because he was at DU and just up the street and didn't want me to help him move in, but I saw him a lot on campus, so that helped.
Yeah. It's gonna be different.
Yeah. Big, big life transitions.
Good.
We're live on now, right? Are we, are we live?
No. I don't think so.
Is it recorded?
Five to six.
My, I'm sorry, I, the meeting, the stream started, I'm trying to pause it, I apologize.
That's all right. Personal conversation.
I think I'll go on mute now.
Welcome, everyone. Could council all turn their videos on if they're able, hopefully? I think we're just missing Member Wink. Just a point of information for everybody, Member Questa is not able to join us, something came up at the last minute.
Yeah, I apologize, Mary. Yeah, they, the, the window changed on the YouTube studio, so it's, that's why it started when it was, we weren't intending it to. So I apologize for that. So like I said, we're already live, so we can go ahead if you want to just start off at 6 o'clock and then, you know, I don't have time to stop it and restart it again.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
We're just waiting for Member Wink. Have you heard anything from her?
I have not. I can resend the invitation if you'd like.
Um, maybe do that, although I just got, we just got it, but I'll often she just manages to get on right. We do have five of us, so. Well, let's, let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. This is our city council study session of Monday, August 10th at 2:00 and 6:00 PM. And Atten can ask the city clerk to take the role, just so everyone knows who all is in the room.
Certainly. Mayor Proton Sierra. Member Anderson.
Present.
Member Questa is absent. Member Russell.
Here.
Member Stone.
Present.
Member Wink is absent. And Merrillson.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. Our first agenda item, well, the whole evening tonight is really about the budget, and this is one of our biggest budget meetings where all the details start to come down through this process. And a big thanks to all of those who have been involved in preparing this. And our first agenda is actually to hear from the Budget Advisory Committee. There are several members here tonight who will present, along with our Finance Director Maria Sabata and the Budget Administrator Jennifer Nolan, to discuss BAC's annual report. And we'd like to get council's feedback regarding the report. So you have scheduled 15 minutes to present and then a discussion Q and A for 25 minutes. I just wanted to say at the outset, I really appreciated the work that you put into this. I'm sure all council will, will say that it's obvious that you've been learning about the city again this year and continuing to figure out what are some of our, our strengths areas and what are some areas we can improve and grow in, so take it away.
Am I up?
Yes, go ahead. All right.
All right, thank you.
The chair, right?
No longer. You'll hear mostly from me this evening. Steve will chime in when it comes to reserve policy, and then the four of us can respond to questions. So I believe you, you have all received a copy of our report. We focused on three themes that I will review at very high level, and then we'll turn it over for questions and further discussion. The three themes are special events, reserve policy, and of course, our fine police department. So over the last year, we heard from the Police Department, Parks and Rec, Communications, Community Development, and Public Works. And to kind of guide them through the discussion, what we asked for them to present to us was just an overall, an overview of their budget, identify areas of financial strain, and also highlight opportunities for growth if their budgets were to expand. So as I go through this report, something that we ask you to keep in mind is that all of our recommendations are under the assumption that our community and our city activities will slowly return to a pre-COVID state. Many of the presentations that we, we heard were presented prior to March, and we're optimistic that, you know, activities will continuously improve. So keep that in mind as you hear some of these recommendations, especially as it pertains to special events. So I'll dive into that section. The first thing that we recognized with respect to special events is the opportunity for the development of a special events committee. It might even have the look and feel of a board and commission that is specific to supporting the Communications and Parks and Rec Department in their planning and implementation of special events. So we think this type of committee would help these departments in their duties. And it would also promote civic engagement and increase citizen involvement, and also just relieve some of the administrative burden that city staff feels in planning and implementing these events. The next area of opportunity that we recognized is really trying to streamline and improve the process for bringing food trucks and vendors to some of the community events, those that are outdoors. As you know, the permitting and licensing process can be onerous, and you've heard from other community members about that. So we're just another group who's chiming in and asking council to keep that in the forefront of their mind and try to examine the process and recognize that bringing, you know, local vendors to these community events ultimately improve city revenue. Moving on to polling. We really want to have a better understanding of the community's response to each of these events. So what we'd like to do is see the city utilize its surveying tool and asking citizens which events they have attended, which ones they would like to attend, and which ones they typically don't attend. And that will help us focus, understand where we should focus most of our effort in planning and in marketing. And then, just to highlight, you know, we, we really admire the creativity involved with event planning and some of the ideas that are, that are on the table. They haven't been executed yet, but we, we look forward to seeing them implemented. And then, cost analysis. One of the questions that we asked, and it seemed to be an unknown, is how much time, how much FTE does it take to plan a given event? And both Communications and Parks and Rec kind of said, I don't know. So we are formally suggesting a time and effort tracking system for planning an event. We know that some events like Fourth of July will require much more time than some of the smaller scale events that you might see around the Civic Center. And we really want to know what kind of return we're getting on that level of effort. So that's our recommendation with cost analysis. It's more of a time and effort cost analysis. And then we have some high-level event-specific suggestions. First is the Bellevue Park Christmas Village and Train. We know this is one of the few events that actually brings in some revenue because they do, you know, sell tickets. So we suggest that organizers look into technology and methods that might be available to implement resident fees and non-resident fees in terms of pricing for the event. So naturally, Inglewood residents might have lower fees than neighboring communities, neighbors from Centennial or Highlands Ranch or what have you. Summer concerts. We think that's a pretty successful event. But again, we see opportunity for trying to bring vendors to that location. So this ties into the food, food truck and vendor discussion I shared with you a moment ago. And you can read more about that in the report, but ultimately, we really want to push for process improvement and investigate the opportunity cost of not having an easier process to bring vendors into these events. Christmas parade and tree lighting, simply stated, we're trying to get more vendors in, of course, and merging these two events into a single effort, streamlining the work that goes into planning those events. And then Fourth of July, of course, is the hot topic of discussion. We are very much in support of sustaining the Fourth of July event, but we also understand that the city of Inglewood is burdened with a disproportionate share of the planning and cost. So one of the things that was presented to us is that the cost of fireworks will be increasing this year, perhaps next year, due to tariffs with the upcoming election. And again, lots of things are changing in light of the pandemic. So naturally, we, we suggest a reevaluation of firework costs after the presidential election because international tariffs may or may not change. So factor that into planning for the 2021 event. We really want to push for a formal cost sharing agreement with neighboring municipalities and districts, Littleton, Sheridan, South Suburban Parks. And some of that cost sharing might be in the form of FTE. You know, we're going to have to contribute just as much time and effort into planning this event as our own city staff does. And then if that fails, if our neighbors just can't or won't agree to a cost sharing agreement, then we propose, you know, marketing and branding the event as an Inglewood event. And of course, it would be open to the public, but really highlight the fact that this is an Inglewood-sponsored and planned event. So I think that covers everything with events, and I ran through that pretty quickly, but again, we can circle back when it comes to Q and A. And if we have Steve, I'll let him take over reserve policy. And when he's done, I will circle back to our suggestions for ask the Police Department.
All right.
No, Steve?
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, you are there.
I just wanted to know we're at 6:11.
Okay.
Yep, I'll be, I'll be brief. Much of what we discussed relative to reserves in our report this year pairs pretty well with what we talked about last year. It remains a concern that the city's reserves are growing. And we believe that it's concerning because there's a policy in place that states what the target level should be, and reserves from year to year have consistently exceeded that target level by a significant amount. And that trend continues. Some people might mistake that for a sign of fiscal health. Personally, I believe that it's not a sign of fiscal health. It's a sign of difficulty determining where to spend the money. So we proposed a couple of things that could be done with these reserves, and we cautioned against one potential vector for the reserves. We would like to see a policy that can be established and followed that allows for a flattening of increases and decreases in the economy. So when we have a year-to-year deficit because of an economic slowdown, we can backfill that with reserves, and we can plan for that. So we're not consistently breaking the policy. We're adjusting the policy to match the conditions, and we're planning for that. The other caution relative to reserves is there's been some discussion about using a portion of the reserves towards enterprises. And our report this year states unequivocally that, that we believe that enterprises should support themselves with the cash fees that they charge for services. That's the purpose of an enterprise. The purpose of the general fund, on the other hand, is to collect money from taxes to support general fund items like Parks and Rec, library, police, fire, and general government services. And we think that there should be separation there. The final note on reserves, I made reference to earlier, and it came up last year as well, is the concept of ratcheting and sliding. So on a, on a fixed basis, we would analyze year over year how much money we took in excess of, of budgeted amount, or how much we took below budgeted amount. And we would adjust the reserve based on those changes.
Okay. I'll move on to the next section. Anything else, Steve?
So I got.
And I can knock this out in less than a minute. When it comes to the Police Department, we're essentially supporting discussions that have been had in recent weeks and in recent months. Body cameras are coming. We are excited about that. When Chief Collins presented budgetary options to you, he mentioned a cloud-based solution. We informally called that option one. We're very much in favor of that. If the proposal comes up for dash cams, we would also encourage council to allocate funds to the implementation of dash cams in addition to body cams. Community policing, in short. We just ask that council continues to ensure that funds are available for sustaining, if not expanding, the Impact Team, the Zone Team, and the All Health Network partnership. And that's it with Police Department. So now we can open it up for discussion. Thanks for letting us run through that.
Wonderful. Thank you. This is great that we have this much time to have a conversation. So council, I'm sure you have questions regarding the report and some of the things you focused on, so please ask away. Let's get the discussion going. All right, well, then I have one. Okay, Member, Member Russell has one.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Committee, for all the hard work that you've done preparing for this. It's, it's obvious. So I have a question. What would you think about using part of the reserves for subsidizing funding to help low-income residents?
So we discussed that briefly in our report. If we were going to use a portion of the reserves for enterprise funds, we would suggest using that exclusively for a fee offset. We understand that as the enterprises begin to build out infrastructure that's been neglected for years and years, that's going to increase the fees that those enterprises have to charge, and that some residents will be adversely affected by those fee increases. So rather than transferring money directly to the enterprise to, in an attempt to pay for these infrastructure upgrades, we would suggest transferring that money to the citizens or to the enterprise so that it could discount the rate of increase for some citizens.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Amber Stone.
Thank you. So we can do that as a rebate. Is that right?
I think that would be a question for finance as far as the structure of how it would work.
Manager Lewis just popped on if he wants to pipe in.
I don't think it would be a rebate per se, but it would kind of act as a rebate. It would be an income-based qualification application that folks would submit, and then we would use general fund, some portion of the general fund, to pay for that as opposed to the enterprise fund paying for it.
Awesome. I love that idea.
Member Anderson.
I don't, I don't really have a lot of questions. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the Budget Advisory Committee for putting this together. You guys worked really hard on this, and I really like a lot of the stuff in here, especially with regard to the events. You put a lot of thought into stuff that I do think we need to be thinking about how, how to get our best value out, out of our event planning and our staff and all of that. So tremendous work on that. And then I love the, the ratcheting and sliding reserve policy. I know this is a, this is a discussion that, that the previous council had maybe last year, but I would like to continue that discussion as well. So anyway, really appreciate all the work that went into this and suggestions in all those areas. So appreciate the volunteer time you guys put in. Thank you.
Member Stone, you have another?
Yeah, sorry. I should have just said the stuff that I had to say in the first place. I also really like the, the ratcheting and sliding idea, and I'm really appreciative of bringing up the permitting and licensing for food trucks. That is something that I've heard a lot about. I have some ideas around that. Lakewood has a very interesting model for the way that they do kind of a reciprocal food inspection and license. Essentially, if you bring your paperwork in from a neighboring municipality that has similar standards, they effectively just issue you the tax account and license and whatnot so that you can start paying the sales taxes. So I think that's a really great idea. I'm also interested to know if you guys feel that there's room for some other community safety and community service programs that we've been discussing that have come up in the last few, I guess, couple of months here, like the idea of park rangers. I know that you talked about expanding the co-responders program and Impact Team. And I'm wondering about maybe bringing on some more EMS services to pair up with those folks. Stuff like that. Anybody have any input on, on that at all?
I'd be interested in exploring it. You said EMS specifically, so that makes me wonder about our relationship with Denver Health and Denver Fire. I'm always in favor of, you know, additional public safety services. EMS is a very specific operation, so I'd like to hear more about that. But personally, I'd be in favor of expanding public safety operations.
Awesome. So I had, I had had a brief conversation with our Finance Director about, it seems like our contract with Denver Fire states that we're supposed to have at least one full-time paramedic specifically tasked to Inglewood. So I'm curious to see if we're actually getting that. And if we are, if we could pair that individual up with our co-responders.
Amber Stone, I don't, I don't know. It might help us to, or also to, to have our All Health Network come at some point and give us a briefing of what they do because they actually do a lot of triaging and a lot of health, health-related things that maybe don't rise to the level of a paramedic, but actually are some very significant cost savings to not go to an emergency room, and they, they have a site to take them to. So we should take a look at all of that. Where would a paramedic or an EMS make a difference? And when, when can it be someone that's got more of a first aid-oriented kind of thing?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'd be interested in connecting with you and just hearing more about the work that you've done and the questions you have and the dialogue that's been had with Denver Health.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Do you have anything else, Amber Stone?
I mean, other than just saying you guys are awesome and I appreciate your hard work, that's, that's pretty much it.
I do have a couple of questions. So I wanted to ask you about the food trucks. Excuse me, I'm in the mountains and there's fire smoke all over, and I'm responding to it from the Grand Junction Fire, so I have this tickle in my throat. But on the food trucks, did you do a more recent cost analysis of our food trucks? Is this more from a while ago, or did you actually look at some of the comparisons from Inglewood-specific versus other areas?
No. In a word, no.
What we heard back a while ago is what you were kind of going on.
Probably what we heard back a while ago. If there's changes and we overlook them, I apologize. And Steve or Chelsea or Joel chime in if I'm if I.
Yeah, because we had, we had a council request around this that might be good to get out because I don't, I think it's, it, yeah, I'm not sure that it's quite what we all heard publicly sometimes, so that might be good for us to get to you. I would, I would be very interested in finding out if there's any newer information where we're lagging behind or, or giving onerous kinds of processes for people. are giving onerous kinds of processes for people. They do have to go through Tri County, which does make it different to Denver County. The other thing was oh, gosh, I love the idea of polling. I think the more we can do of that, the better. I like this idea of some kind of a committee. Maybe it's an ad hoc events committee where we get a real cross-section of different age groups particularly. I think about the concerts that we have. Some people have said it just serves a certain nation. I'm not sure who makes that decision about who what kind of bands we get or whatever. So I would not be the person to be picking those. We'd have all classical every night. No one would come.
I would come.
Thanks, Suzanne. But I like that idea. And then the question about the new ratcheting and sliding, I wanted to actually ask Director Sabata. What are the practices that other cities use for this? And I like this idea, and I think actually in practice, that's what we were doing a while ago. From year to year, we would set our percentage at a different amount based on what was going on. I'm wondering what are some of the general practices in accounting for cities right now? We were told we were would depend on who you heard from. We had some people that did not like what we were doing.
Yes, I would have to inquire again to be perfectly honest. So would you like that to be a council request?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. If others agree with that, are you all okay with us making that a council request? Yep. Okay, seeing a bunch of head nods.
I think personally, the difference between what happened in years past and what happens now is now there's a policy in place. And with ratcheting and sliding, we would be suggesting an organized policy for that. Whereas in years past, the budgetary focus was on what do we need to do this year to fill those holes, or what do we need to do, you know, year to year? Ratcheting and sliding is a much more organized method of doing that. So we plan each year for a fixed amount increase or decrease.
We did have that in the past. We had kind of this 12% at the time. And one time, one year, we went down to 9% because we were in the midst of terrible recession, now the Great Recession and stuff. But I'd be curious as to whether other cities are doing it like that. And if we can, I would love to see it open up a bit like this. I like this idea. And then my my last thing has to do with the body cams. I hope you knew that council had already
Oh, they're coming.
Wanted this. We're all aligned on this one, and the timing just happened to hit at an unfortunate historical moment, but one that I think is going to help us in the long run, just get better with all of this. But I agree with the community policing piece and and do think it might be helpful. And maybe it's just if we do, we're going to later tonight talk about policing, but a little bit more, but it might be that we need to get a little bit more information about how the the coresponders actually do operate and what they do, where they can take them for healthcare needs outside of emergency room, because it is quite a savings, like $360,000 in a six-month period that we got reported last year on it. And that's kind of information to make sure you all get. So I will I will work with Sean to see if we can get that. That's not something we produce. It's something that all health produces. So maybe we can ask for an update and make sure Budget Advisory Committee always gets those.
Yeah. Yeah. And if I can add, we did note that return on investment upward, you know, well above $300,000 for that all health partnership. And if I can add an observation, you know, Chief Collins seems to be very deliberate and intentional and respectful in his requests of council when it comes to the budget. I think he's very mindful of how we spend taxpayer dollars, resident taxpayer dollars. So I think, I don't know, I very much trust his requests and I take them very seriously. I don't find them to be frivolous or or extreme. So I just wanted to add that qualitative note in there.
Yeah, thank you. And he's the one who kicked off, and I think he's on tonight. He's the one who kicked off the coresponder program, so behind it. All right. Any other comments or questions from council? Thank you very much, Budget Advisory Committee, and for council members that serve on that for the work you've done here. This is really helpful.
Thank you very much. All right. I'm going to drop off and see you on YouTube.
Okay. All right, the next and the big portion is Director Sabata is here to review the draft of proposed 2021 operating and capital budgets. This is going to be a combination of information and question-answer direction. So the leadership team is all here to present and review this. And our first and the director of it all is going to be Director Sabata, right? You're going to just orchestrate one to the next to the next.
Yes, I'm going to do my best. So thank you, council. I'm going to actually ask Jenny Nolan, who really did a lot of the legwork in putting the presentation together, to actually share her screen. So she'll be driving tonight. And while she's doing that, you know, we will spend a portion of this evening talking about, just in general, where we are headed in 2021. So I'd like to provide an update to the overviews that I've provided up to this point. But you're right, the majority of the discussion will come from the department directors who have taken time over the last couple of months to refine their budgets and build their line item detailed budgets that we will put on Open Gov so that there is transparency with the budget as we did last year. We'll continue to do that. And again, we'll be spending a majority of the time talking specifically about those general fund budgets. However, we also will recap the utilities budgets that you've been hearing about over the last several months so that you can see how those budgets are shaping up and what what fee increases have been discussed and will be proposed as we go forward through the budgeting process. And tonight, I guess what I'd like to ask is that city council really focused as we're going through these lists of requests for the 2021 budget, we really are seeking your guidance in how to address the deficit that we are currently facing, given the fact that we're kind of going to be leaving 2020. Hopefully, going into 2021 with COVID somewhat behind us. But we still, we're coming off of a revenue number that obviously is going to be lower as we estimated it in 2020. And even if we build some growth, that number for revenue, so our source of revenue, is less than the 2020 budget. So that with increasing needs in the city to continue what I believe are outstanding services to our citizens, we are faced with a deficit that we need to address. So as the directors go through their requests, if you could think about what alternatives we may use to consider moving forward with those requests because they are very meaningful and well-thought-out requests and how we kind of close the gap. We also are going to talk a little bit about capital. It's not going to be the only time that we can talk about operating in capital again, because we do plan to come back on the 24th. But because of some revenue that we are expecting to get in the fall that we had not budgeted for in permits, we believe that we have some additional funding, probably $300,000 to $400,000 that you might consider funding additional projects from that tier-one list or others as we go through the discussions with the directors. So those are the key things that I'd like you to think about as we go forward. All right, if you'll advance. So this is where we're at in our budget calendar and where we've been. So we're making good progress. I'll talk about where we're headed towards the end of the presentation. So go ahead. So again, I talked about what we're going to do. The only thing that I didn't discuss is that in your packet, we had included the same discussion document that we talked about or that we used last year to assist you as we go through it. Through the conversation, you could actually, if you've printed that out, you could use that to actually mark down your notes so that during the discussion period, we might be able to kind of go through that a little bit more expediently so that we know what you're referring to to use that discussion back. And then it might help. And then again.
But that was a really useful little tool.
Yeah, it was last year, so we thought we'd include it again so that hopefully you could print it off and just keep a sheet together as we go through, just to recall the items that are being requested. I'll start with the general fund as I had discussed. So you know, every month we've been meeting and we've been talking about the available funds, and as we've talked before, the fund balance in excess of the reserve requirement currently is approximately estimated to be about 8.3 million. Going forward into 2021 with the budget that's being proposed and will be discussed tonight, we are projecting a balance in that in excess of the reserve requirement of approximately 7.7 million. Now, that number has two assumptions. Number one, that everything in the budget is put forth as we are stating in our presentation tonight. So we will fund the deficit through use of the unassigned fund balance. And the reason that the number's not moving as much is because, if you recall, there was a $3 million fund, a $3 million loan that was given to the storm drainage fund from the LTAR. So in effect, the LTAR would, you know, not be replenished to the full amount if that 3.4 million, you know, deficit would be used to cover the budget deficit. So a lot of numbers being discussed tonight, and certainly we can go back at the end of the conversation and talk about how this all fits together. But again, this assumption includes full coverage of the deficit plus the loan being repaid from the bond proceeds that we if we go forward with a bond would be paid for back into the fund through the bond proceeds. All right. So this is just an overview of that same page, just putting it out in black and white. The estimated year-on-fund balance, as I mentioned, 21.6 million. Our current revenue proposed budget is approximately 52.3 million. And our expenditure appropriation budget that is proposed is 55.8 million. There's a slight transfer from the Public Improvement Fund of 100,000. So we are looking at a net deficit of approximately 3.4 million, leaving an estimated year-on-fund balance at the end of 2021 approximately 18.2 million. I always like to show this slide because it demonstrates the fiscal responsibility over the past 10 years on a compounded annual growth rate of revenues of 3.4%. Our expenditures have been maintained on a compounded basis of approximately 1.9 million in comparison to the CPI that is running at approximately 2.5% for expenditures. So we are fiscally responsible as a city. I also wanted to emphasize some of the efficiencies that are included in the 2021 proposed budget. These are not only efficiencies that are actually proposed for 2021, but also things that we're doing right now that efficiencies going forward into 2021. So the first one, administration, this has been discussed in our previous conversations. The city manager has decided to hire an assistant city manager for two years, delaying the hiring of a deputy. So that actually does save the city money. Within finance, finance assumed the risk management, property and liability administration without any additional FTE. We were able to accomplish that, you know, very proud of the team because they did find some process improvements that they were able to put in place in that area. So there was no reason to ask for an additional headcount. We also, as you know, actually, city council finalized the sales and use tax third-party remitters ordinance recently. That certainly helps with efficiency, not only for us, but also for our taxpayers. We implemented a new merchant card processing system, saving approximately $20,000 annually. And recently updated the contract management system, saving staff time and researching contract documents. And that's throughout the city. That's not just within finance. Those contract documents are used by a lot of different departments. That's cool. As you all know, the information technology team implemented DocuSign, which is now saving the city time, money, and paper in addition to the efficiency gain, just for lower turnaround. I know that this also, you know, absolutely helps all of the city departments, but particularly procurement. So that was a definitely a great investment. So thank you for that. And community development within their budgets, they have reduced overtime, office expenditures, and subscriptions. Okay. And for Parks, Recreation, Library, and Golf, Director Underhill has offered to share just because I don't want to talk through all of these. She can do a much better job than me. So Christina, could you share a little bit about some of these efficiencies that are proposed, not only going out of 2021 in reaction to COVID, but also 2021?
Yeah, thank you, Director Sabata. So we've really dug hard with our efficiencies, knowing that our revenue is lacking this year. So in Parks, you'll see in our budget, we're requesting a park ranger to help code enforcement actually have a little bit more time to deal with code issues outside of our parks. Golf, we had a new process improvement in the payment plan. You have to pay in advance of play, and this is due to COVID. It actually helps speed in the check-in process, and players seem to be pretty happy with that. We also adjusted our tee times, which helped with the pace of play. So during COVID, we spread them out. As COVID has slowly gone through its time, we've brought the tee times back. So it's not only bringing in more revenue, but we're finding we're getting less complaints. So that's good. Also, as far as onsite staff, you know, we were closed for at least six weeks during COVID when it was starting off, but we had to keep staff at the course, keep visitors safe, which we did. So we kept staff onsite. We're in other locations. We didn't have staff there. On our library side, as you know, the library is still closed. You can't just go in and check out books. It's open for curb-side and computer-based appointments. But we left a lot of our unfilled positions unstaffed, which saves some money during the summertime. We have about three positions that are still vacant. Obviously, if people called out sick or went on vacation, we had additional cost savings. We did not fill those positions like we would if we were open. Also, this is kind of bittersweet in some respects, but we canceled many upcoming programs because we kind of host some in-person at the library. But the savings from those canceled programs actually gave us some time and money to look at investing in more long-term benefit costs, like we're looking at developing a teen room in the library, which hopefully will increase our teen program, which is one of our goals. So we were able to redirect funds to do some cool stuff at the library. Pirates Cove is a big one. We usually had more staff that helped clean that were just dedicated to that, but we utilized our lifeguards for cleaning so we can clean the park multiple times a day after each visit, those two-hour time blocks. So it became more efficient. We were cleaner at all times. We also developed an efficient staffing plan that is going to be cost savings for the summer. But also, it didn't have any impact on our safety or customer service we were offering. It's also something that we'll look at ongoing through the years to see if we can, you know, bring in more revenue but reduce our costs to run the park. And then just a quick one, too. The birthday party formats changed. We used to have two staff at it running the party, and instead of doing that, it's just a rental that'll occur, but we can still give similar services. ERC in Maui, the way we interacted with all of our guests changed as far as like, you know, virtual programming is concerned, we could do actually a lot more programming for less cost. One example also is a group swim lessons. We went to more individual-based swim lessons, private swim lessons, and that brought in more revenue, but also helped keep people safe so we didn't have large groups in the pool trying to do swim lessons at the same time. As far as staff workload, we're spreading out instead of a part-time staff, which costs us, we send it we spread out the workload to our senior level, full-time staff, to cover more shifts. Obviously, there's utility and energy savings with having our facilities closed this year. And then, like I mentioned before, virtual programming, recreation has changed completely. The field has as far as how we program and get people active in our community. It's all moved to virtual. We have some in-person, but ultimately, we kept people engaged, and that was our goal.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So moving forward, so I will continue to provide an overview of the investments that are recommended for 2021. You will hear more about each one of these as we walk through with each of the directors, the specific department requests. But this is an overview of the requests and just the total amount of everything that we'll be talking about tonight. So within the presentation, we have included salaries and other earning increases as we've talked about. For the collective bargaining units, the assumption is a 3.5% increase for the MSC, MSCH employers, employees, excuse me, a 2.5% increase is assumed. And so with those increases, you can see the overall impact to the city's budget. If you could, thank you. 1.25 million. Including that also. Included in that also is additional overtime and standby pay of approximately 100,000 and Ottawa tech allowance, tech allowances that have slightly increased as well, the assumptions in, in the budget. To offset a portion of that cost, the part-time and temporary position costs have decreased and by approximately 500,000. The majority of, of that is in the Parks and Rec area, although it is sprinkled throughout the organization. So, as needs in those organizations or those departments, four temporary employees have decreased from 2020. That is an offset. They might have been replaced by a permanent position because they were filling it with a temporary position, but each of the directors can talk about the assumptions that they've made as they go through their departmental budgets. We have talked with the council regarding the compensation survey. Director, Director Henger has spent some time speaking with you about that. Throughout the organization, those increases to minimum that have been discussed totaled approximately 105,000. And those increases are discussed by department as we go through the specific budgets. We also have assumed a most conservative increase to our medical benefits based on the agreement that we put in place with Kaiser last year. We also have had benefit enrollment changes. So, the way the budget is put together as we go into the year is that we select the current enrollment choice for employees as they've selected for 2020. And we also, for new FTEs, have included the benefits at the family rate, which are the highest rates, so the most conservative. So, those changes, in addition to the medical increase, medical cost increase of approximately 8%, that is currently still being negotiated with Kaiser, that increase accounted for approximately 880,000 within the budget that you're hearing about tonight. Retirement and other benefits, the increase that is included in the current proposed budget is approximately 219,000. All right. So, as far as FTEs, the staff is recommending the addition of eight FTEs, our full-time equivalent employees. Those are listed on this particular slide with the amount and the FTE. But again, I don't want to spend a lot of time here. I just wanted to let you know that the cost for these employees is approximately 770,000. And you'll have an opportunity to ask questions of the directors as they walk through each of those requests with you tonight. Last year, we talked about the Partnership for Excellence with Effective Partnerships, which includes our Arapahoe County Emergency Management Contract, the Denver Fire Contract, and the Englewood Trolley. You can see that we have costs, cost increases built into those contracts that are also reflected in our current budget at those amounts that are listed. Communications, Director Hargreth will talk about the need for a business assistance portal that added approximately $30,000 to the communications budget. And for information technology, all of the requests that we have been making regarding IT do come with an ongoing maintenance cost. And Director Rocklander will talk a little bit more about the maintenance and upgrade costs that are required to be supported next year of approximately 462,000. And there also was a request, or is a request, to reclassify the GAS position with a slight increase there. Within a well-planned community and regulatory environment, there's approximately 455,000 being asked for. Part of that is the restorative justice program of approximately 100,000. The city center redevelopment of 50,000, the Title 16 rewrite of 250,000. Workers' compensation, this is a number that we typically, along with other benefits, are working on at the time that we're sharing this preliminary budget with you. We expect that in the upcoming versions, we'll be able to tell you how that number will impact our budget for next year. We do also expect an increase in property and liability insurance of approximately 55,000, just based by currencies. But again, these are estimates, and it could change, but we do need to be conservative as we put forth the budget to make sure we have the appropriate appropriation. For vibrant community, although there are no operational increases to the following programs, they still exist. There was just not additional funding requested year-over-year. All right. So, as far as our assumptions, I think we've talked about these before. As far as our sales and use tax revenue, 3% above where we're estimating 2020. The next one is an important point because this has come up in our budget discussions when we actually put forth the draft budget. So, I will definitely want to understand council's direction and thoughts regarding the assumption that we've included regarding the retail marijuana sales tax rate increase. This year, the sales tax rate is currently 10% total. As you know, you can, based on a previous vote of the people, increase that by 1.5%. That would generate approximately $33,000 in additional revenue. In the current revenue assumptions, we have not included that increase. So, no increase is recommended by staff, given the current economic conditions in, due to COVID, for the marijuana sales tax rate increase, but would appreciate any input that you have regarding that. As always, we don't know yet if the assessment on current properties are going to increase. So, we don't know whether or not we are going to receive additional property tax revenue. We would expect to get that towards the end of August, and we'll certainly keep you apprised. So, these are some of the assumptions. The expenditure uses, uses, again, the increase is based on, this 2.5% is what we believe is an inflationary factor. It's, it's not saying that all of our expenditures are going up 2.5%. It's what we included for our commodities and things of that nature. So, I wanted to make sure that you knew what assumption was lying behind some of our expenditures that we had to make assumptions for. All right. I included this because this slide, and hopefully had an opportunity to read it. This actually is a ballot measure that is currently going to be voted on November 3rd in the state, and it talks about property tax assessment rates. A yes vote would actually support revenue in the city, whereas a no vote actually would support, be more supportive to the taxpayer because it could mean that tax, property taxes could go down. So, it's just something that we keep on our radar, and certainly, when it is voted upon, any change that we would expect to the budget, we would have already voted on the budget, but it would be, you would have already voted on the budget. But it is something that could impact the revenue assumptions that we've put into place, so I wanted to make you aware of that. All right. Okay. So, this just gives a breakdown of the sources and uses of fund by the specific areas that we talk about every, every month in our monthly report outs. And as you can see, the sales and use tax remains the majority of our revenue, and you can see where the other revenue assumptions have come in. For all of the revenues, there aren't significant changes proposed. I think we're, we're showing the, the change, the significant changes, recreation, Parks and Rec, you know, we had already shared this year that we felt we had an over-aggressive budget. So, we are proposing a $2.3 million budget next year versus 2.7. That assumption is, you know, it's, it's a healthy assumption, you know, given that we don't know where we are going to land with COVID going forward. But we feel fairly confident that if things get back to a new normal and we continue to put in place the services that Director Underhill just talked about, we think we can achieve that revenue. So, this was included. All right. And then, for uses of funds, I, I wanted to point out again, kind of as we walk through this, where the pieces of pie land next year relative to our services versus our, what I will call, support organizations. And you can see that it's just moving slightly. So, our direct services this year are estimated to be approximately 70% of our total budget uses of funds, whereas next year, the direct services will be approximately 69% of the total. And I will always include this because it is one of the largest increases in our budget for our salaries and benefits. I've talked about this, but this gives you an idea of, for salaries, the increase of approximately 1.2 million, and then the benefits, another 1.1 million. And this is the breakdown by the specific, the collective bargaining agreement areas, and then also MSC and MCH, again, with the increase assumptions that I think are on the next page. Correct? Yes. So, you can see the assumptions that we built into this budget that we're proposing and putting forth relative to the Colorado State Salary Wage Increase. It was 3% for 2020, and they are proposing a 0% for 2021. And we've talked about this in the past, but I wanted to make sure that I put it forth very transparent. What we've included in this budget is a 3.5% increase for the EEA and the EPBA, and a 2.5% for the MSC and MCH employees. All right. Our capital project funds. If you could move forward. So, this gives you an idea of where we will land at the end of 2021 with the current estimates or the current projects that you have asked us to put forth in this budget, that total approximately $5 million. We would end next year with an estimate of approximately 5. Can you go back, Jenny, please? 1.4 million. We typically like to keep this a little bit north of 1 million to make sure that if we have any unexpected expenditures, or we have projects that perhaps go over budget, that we do have those funds available. But I do believe that if you so choose, you could talk with us tonight about other projects that you may want to fund that were on that tier-one list, or even outside of the tier-one list, in, within the capital project list that was included, the information that we gave you to review before the meeting. All right. Now, you can move forward, Jenny. So, as a reminder, these are the projects that will be included based on the direction that you've previously provided. But again, that can be changed as well, and you will have an opportunity to, to speak with each of the directors that have put forth these projects as they go through their departmental budgets. All right. So, the combination of all of these totaled $5 million. And then, this was the list that was originally the tier-one list. We not only included it in the presentation, but there was actually a, a better reading version that was included in your package for, for today. But I just, I wanted to make sure that when we talk about tier-one projects, when you're talking about it through your discussion, this is what will be done, what you'll be talking to. All right. So, with that, I will take a breath before we introduce all of the directors and they talk about their respective budgets. Before we move forward, are there any questions or comments?
Member Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Sabata. Good to see you again.
You too.
Thank you. So, before the department leads share their respective pieces of information, I'm wondering if now might be a good time for you to perhaps provide us with an understanding of, under the, under the framework of us providing you guidance in terms of how to address the deficit, I'm wondering if you could provide us with an estimate in terms of what one day in 2021 of furlough of all our staff would result in, in savings? So, just a thought that might bring our number to a different place before we start looking at department keeper defer. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's a good question. Would it be okay for me to ask Jenny Nolan? I think this is information that we actually have gathered. And Jenny, if, if it's information that you currently have, if you could provide it otherwise, if you could work on that, and then we could come back and talk to that during the discussion period, would that be fine?
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. Okay. And then, Jenny, if you could put this back into presentation mode, that would be great.
You're ready?
Maybe you don't want to.
Do you have another question? Do you want to take that too?
Sure.
Okay. Member Russell has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Sabata, for your work. The question that I have is on page 18, where the graphs of general fund and uses of funds 20 versus, 2020 versus 2021. So, are those graphs drawn to scale?
We'll, we'll look.
And, and the reason I'm asking that question is mostly because of the police department and the city manager's office and all of the things that are moved from city manager's office to the police department. Because those, they look pretty much the same.
So, so in this, and Jenny can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but they do look the same because they are represented within a fire and emergency management service, even though the police will be managing those contracts, we've separated them. So, the only increase year-over-year are the increases that I talked about before, salaries and benefits, and also the contractual services. So, so, you know, the, the fire, for example, the contract is increasing 3% by contract. That's reflected in 2021. But we haven't shown, we're showing the fire and emergency management services outside of the police.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That answers my question. So, I appreciate that.
Okay. All right.
Mayor Protem?
Give me one second here. Let me know if you're able to hear me, because I know I've been cutting in and out.
We are. We can hear you, or at least I can.
So, Director Sabata, just a question. So, when we talk about a deficit, the reason why there's a deficit this year is because we're asking for $5 million worth of capital improvements towards the general fund this year, correct? It's not because we have operational expenses, or I'm trying to figure out how to word this, but the reason why is because we're asking for $5 million. If we were to draw back the $5 million worth of capital improvements, we would basically have, we wouldn't use the term deficit. Am I understanding this correctly?
I believe that this, no, there are two separate funds. So, we have the capital project funds. That's where the $5 million is coming from. We do have operational expenses that are increasing due to salaries and benefits, contractual increases, full-time, we have new requests for personnel that actually accumulate that, that, those monies.
Right. But what would be without the, I guess I had to go back because I didn't see it on the slide on where that was broken down based off of, without, where the capital improvement fund was shown separately. So, I guess I'll go back through the notes and see if I can find it.
So, Jenny is going back to it right now. It's right here. So, these are the capital projects funds. They're different, different funds. The general fund is Fund O2. These are the capital projects funds. So, they're supported by a different revenue source.
Okay.
Okay. And this is the general fund. So, they're separate.
Yeah, I'll go back through them and look a little bit closely. I think you, Director Sabata.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
I don't see any other questions. Anyone else have some? Nope. Go ahead, continue.
All right. So, the format for the discussions with the directors follow the same format that we shared last year and that we actually had an opportunity to share actually earlier this year. We have updated those requests. We were pretty clear, the staff was very clear, I think, in showing what the changes were versus the conversation that we had earlier this year. We tried to strike out numbers and put the new number in so that we, it was ease of reading and understanding the changes. We, we have quite a bit to go through, so I've asked each department director to really go through their information very quickly. And we do allow for question after each one, so that if there's any clarifying questions, it's top of mind, so that it might help you as you're going through the spreadsheet that we put forth. This is the order we'll, we'll provide you the information in. And with that, I will turn it over to City Manager Lewis, because he will be talking about legislation and the administration departments.
Thank you, Maria. I, I want to start out with just a general comment about the budget, and that is, we are showing you a budget that has a $3.4 million shortfall. I believe in conversations with each of you during my one-on-one meetings with you, I've explained that the budget staff, as well as myself, have sat down with each director and already begun to identify cost reductions that you'll see in upcoming budgets. But we wanted to really show you the full scope and scale of what the departments think that they need to really most effectively serve the residents of Inglewood. That said, we know we simply can't afford all of that without cutting into the reserves by, you know, overthrowing. That said, we know we simply can't afford all of that without cutting into the reserves by, you know, over $3 million. So we are prepared upon your direction to bring back some of those changes and really understand your priorities tonight. So we'll start with the Legislation Department. This is really the City Council budget. We don't have much, many changes that are proposed in this particular budget. But just to let you know, we have put in both legislation and the City Manager's Administration Budget, this priority of restorative justice. And we'll look at the next slide, which I believe has the costs that we're estimating about that. So you may know that we've hired Ames Stinson, and they are working very closely with an internal steering committee made up of court, staff, City Attorney's Office, police staff members, as well as a couple of other departments to really help guide a planning process that Ames Stinson is leading to create an organizational chart, kind of a plan for how we might roll out something in 2021. So we had money budgeted for that particular, or in the budget for that expenditure for the planning of this. So we're estimating, this is again a guess at this point, as that work is still being finalized, but we're putting in $100,000 towards that effort for 2021. So again, this is your budget, more or less, right now, because we haven't identified which department the Restorative Justice Program will land in at this point. We really want to look at best practices in other cities to determine that. And since this was a council priority, we put that cost in the City Council's Legislative Department budget. And I can't see who has their hand raised, so I'll have to depend on the mayor to call on.
No one has their hands up.
Okay.
Are we at that point with, oh, we are. Okay, any questions, folks?
Yeah, we're giving you an opportunity to ask questions at the end of each.
Yeah, I was following my own PowerPoint, not yours, I'm sorry. Member Wink has a question now.
I actually don't see Mr. Questa. Is Member Questa still here?
No, you missed at the beginning. Member Questa cannot be here tonight.
Okay, I don't have a question. Thank you, City Manager Lewis.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Administration Department. As you know, the Administration Department is made up of the City Manager's Office and the City Clerk's Office. You can see some costs mainly as a result of the reorganization that we did of our office earlier this year. So in personnel, we have a reduction of $70,000 that should be a little closer to 80 when it's all said and done in personnel reductions. We've got an additional $1,000 in commodities, and then we have a total reduction. And this is primarily from the Emergency Management Contract moving out of the City Manager's Office and into the police budget. Next slide. Thank you. And so we have a couple of priorities here, and we have not put money to this at this point, because as you know, the Tri-Cities Homelesses Policy Committee is still developing their recommendations, which will be represented in a strategic planning document, if you will. And so, but that is a priority as well as that Restorative Justice Program. In terms of operational request changes, as you know, we hired an assistant to the city manager. I think I may have put a typo earlier in this presentation saying Assistant City Manager. That is assistant to the city manager. It's a savings to the overall budget of about $80,000. And that is from eliminating for at least two years the deputy city manager position, and then hiring the assistant to the city manager. And then last but not, we have moved, as has been noted earlier in the City Manager's reorganization plan, we've moved the Neighborhood Resources Coordinator to the Communications Department. Moving on, as you know, as part of that reorganization, we moved the Fire Marshals Division to Police under Special Operations and Codes, which resulted in our budget being reduced by about $600,000. We've again moved that Rappahoe County Emergency Management Contract out, Neighborhood Resources moved the operations of the Fire Division to, excuse me, that would be the Denver Fire Contract. The way funding project, we are not proposing to fund this in 2021. So that just goes away, but that project is under the Communications Department, as noted there. And then we had no folks in our particular department that were under the minimum of the salary ranges as part of the compensation study. So you're going to see this in every single department's presentation, so I just want to take a moment to explain that. So as you know, we undertook a compensation study, the first one that's been done in the last few years. We were a little overdue, and what that really did was look at the different job descriptions, benchmark our positions against a whole range of cities throughout the Southern Front Range here in the state, and really determined where our minimum and maximum ranges would be for every one of those positions, full-time positions in the city of Inglewood. So when you see these presentations, different people will be telling you, we need to adjust the budget by X amount in order to make sure that everyone's paid to at least the minimum of those ranges that have now been established. So we had no people that fell into that under range. But we do have some additional costs that we're going to incur in 2021 with regard to employee education, professional development. That's mainly from about, a little over half of that. It's from increasing our investment in folks throughout. We want a representative in most of the departments that can go through the Denver Peak Academy, and that utilizes the lean process or Six Sigma, as it's sometimes referred to, to really train people on how to improve processes and procedures throughout the organization. So we have requested that. And then the City Clerk's Office is pursuing a number of certifications for their staff members, as well as the New Records Management Person, that will cost some additional dollars too. We don't have any capital projects in the CMO, but the City Clerk is going to go over a new records information management system.
Good evening, Council. So one of the top initiatives for the City Clerk's Office is to implement a citywide records and information management system. And after hiring our new records management coordinator, and after a lot of exploration and research on how other cities are doing this effectively, we've basically identified the need for a more robust, user-friendly, functional, and integrative software system for a citywide records management system. So you know why we need that? You know, it's to ensure compliance with our records and information management policy, state statutes for records management, promote transparency, accessibility, automation of retention, destruction. So just automating all the processes throughout staff. And while the system that we thought we were going to be rolling out, it works well for managing the financial records. It's definitely not something that has the capabilities that we need for a citywide system. And so initially, we kind of went out there to other cities. And this slide we did early on, asking for, you know, approximately $150,000. And what we're finding after reaching out to several cities is for a municipality our side, we do think it's going to be more likely under $100,000. And so I certainly can answer any questions that you may have.
Member Wink has a question.
Mayor, thank you, City Clerk Carlisle. So I would imagine that records management correlates highly with records retrieval. I'm wondering what this will mean for managing Cora requests. At certain times in the past, of course, you know, requests have been quite labor-intensive. So I'm wondering.
Yeah. It's literally going to streamline all of our processes, especially for Cora. You know, we've been doing a deep dive into every department, just identifying the records that they have, and certainly their records needs. So you know, we've worked with each department to know that we have a lot of paper records, and then we're definitely moving into the digital records. And so just the organization of that, the searchability of that, again, accessibility is going to be key for streamlining literally all processes for internally for staff, but certainly for our citizens as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I don't see any, so I guess we can move on.
All right, so at this point, I will ask City Attorney Brown to speak about the City Attorney's Office.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Your sound is a little bit wonky.
Can you hear me better?
Yes. Can everybody hear her? Okay, go ahead.
I'm just going to shout, because that might help. So on the first slide, you can see that the City Attorney's Office budget is really not changing much at all. There was, the Finance Department did the math to show the small increase for personnel associated with the annual, I think, 2% increase this year. So other than that, our budget is not changing between 2020 and 2021. The initiatives for the City Attorney's Department really are continuing between 2020 and into 2021. And the reason is there are three of us, and we have really broad needs within the city. And the impact of COVID has really been a demand on the time of our department. It's, COVID support has been 40 to 50% of my time since the beginning of March. So some of the initiatives that we'd hope to get to in 2020 are just going to have to roll to 2021. They are not any less important. It's just bandwidth has been met and exceeded. But I can say that we've had several really big successes this year within our initiatives. Right at the moment, I have an Assistant City Attorney in four departments, including the Police Department, at least one half-day per week. And when they're in those departments, they're looking at legal issues, they're responding to legal questions immediately, and they are providing training immediately on all sorts of issues. So that's really continued to support the city's proactive approach to everything legal. Our goal is, if our employees can be trained effectively, we are not going to have the kind of litigation issues that other cities have. Where we want to be putting our legal dollars is not into litigation. It's into helping our city be more successful with the resources it has. And I feel like we've been very successful on that, in that this year. Next slide. Again, we are going to continue to support the city administration and the major initiatives out of the city. Restorative Justice.
Margaret Brocklander, I think you're unmuted.
Okay, so restorative justice is something that we're watching very carefully. For those of you who are aware of the Restorative Justice Program, for the most part, that tends to be a major draw on prosecutorial resources. So we're watching where that's going to be going throughout 2020 and into 2021. The redevelopment program, when we do have outside counsel, that does require quite a bit of time from, basically, it's my time, out of the department. So that's a major initiative. And the homeless initiatives, we're trying to maintain strong partnerships with the other cities, the Tri-Cities attorneys, to make sure that we're addressing these in a regional manner, which might be more effective and helpful for all of our communities. The building and fire code updates, and the traffic code updates, we are still anticipating that those will be completed and approved this fall. Emergency management, we're hopeful to get a first draft to the City Council by this fall. But some of the rest of these codes, again, because of the demand of resources that was brought about by COVID, they're just rolling into 2021. Next slide. The moment where I am focused, again, since we're a small department, it's how I'm focusing. But what I'm focusing on looking at throughout 2021 is how the legal department can more effectively support the public utilities initiatives, public utility projects, the water resources. We're paying a lot of money for outside counsel to provide these services. They have to be provided, whether that occurs with attorneys in-house or whether that occurs with attorneys who are outside counsel. Many of these things may be more effectively and fiscally provided if we had someone in-house who could meet the needs, who could be onsite, the way we've got someone onsite with the Finance Department and the Law Enforcement Department now. So we really intend to come up with a plan for more effectively meeting the needs of the utility departments in those areas, to be more fiscally prudent going into the future, but also to meet the ever-increasing needs as those infrastructure projects begin to develop. And as we look at more carefully protecting water resources, as water becomes more and more scarce, we need to have answers at our fingertips a lot more quickly. So that's going to be probably the primary initiative throughout 2021, and you'll hear about it from us again in going into the 2022 budget. Next policy, our next slide. The employee education professional development support, this is $10,000. That's how much has been budgeted for my department in the last couple of years. That number remains unchanged. Unfortunately, the cost of continuing legal education is expensive, but we have never met that $10,000, and we're hopeful that we don't. But that's the amount that we've been budgeting in recent years. So again, that remains unchanged. All of our, the compensation studies showed that all of our positions were right at the middle range. So nobody was very much over or very much under. And I think that means that the amounts that employees of the City Attorney's Office are being paid is exactly what market requires.
Question and answers here, Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Attorney. I just, I'm assuming that litigation is not included in this budget. Is it in risk management budget? Is that where it is?
Well, yes, possibly. If we have a major case come through the city, that typically goes through SIRS, which is a contract that the city entered into years and years and years ago. The city has $150,000 deductible on every case turned over to SIRS. So the first $150,000 is paid by the city on those litigation, or those major litigation cases. I don't know that we've had those hit that amount since I've gotten here. Typically, we've been cleaning up a couple old cases. And I think we've had one or two over the last three years where it's, it cost us a little bit more, whatever it says, I can't remember every single case. So if we have a major case, it would go through Risk Management SIRS. But my goal is, we don't have major cases. And so what we do in my department is, if there's a threat of a lawsuit, we get on top of that immediately. We start investigating. We make sure one of our attorneys goes out to the department immediately. What kind of evidence is there? Are there witnesses? So we really actively work to avoid any situation that could possibly evolve into something major.
So I guess my question is, do we have a budget other than the major cases that go through risk management?
I, within my department, I have budgeted $70,000 for outside counsel. And most of that money goes to support costs associated with HR, with HR matters. So for example, when COVID hit, we were looking at the number of cases that might have been, that were filed for unemployment. The city of Inglewood had those incredible numbers of unemployment cases from over the past couple of years come back. And we needed to monitor each one of those and make sure that we responded proactively to each one of those. So HR issues come up quite a bit, and that's where the majority of my legal budget goes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. I should have probably brought this up under the. I should have probably brought this up under the administrative conversation, but last week, when we, well, we need to talk about salaries for both our city manager and our city attorney. And my suggestion tonight would be that next week, we're going to be doing that with the judge. And I wonder if we ought to just do all three at once and make our decisions then on all three. That would slightly change these budgets on both of them. Are you okay with that? I did talk with Manager Lewis today and found out that the HR department had already done a comp study, so we do know what the norms are, and we could utilize that information next week. Is there any disagreement with that? Okay, then we'll plan to do that. But it's just a heads up, there'll be, if we make any changes, that will influence both of these budgets. Any other questions? Seeing none, Director Sabato, you're next. Again, thanks, Allison and your team.
Cam back, and Director Wolf will be talking about the municipal court budget.
Good evening, Council. The municipal court budget is essentially a status quo budget this year. You'll notice that it's a less than 2%, or I mean, it's about a 2.6% increase. Obviously, it's a personnel cost on that. We've had slight increases in some of our services in relation to court-appointed counsel and costs for our credit card usage. Nobody uses cash or checks anymore, and so that continues to go up a little bit every year. Next slide. Our priorities and initiatives, you've seen these before. We are looking at enhancing and continue to enhance through our service deliveries. We're using Zoom hearings, we're doing additional opportunities over the phone. We continue to focus on our community outreach and strengthen those connections. Our case management system, which we are knee-deep in, continues to be moving forward. We're in the configuration and testing phase right now. We hope to put that out for public use in the first quarter of next year. And we're really looking forward to that, because there'll be an awful lot of online services that we'll be able to offer the community. The legislative changes continue to be somewhat challenging, particularly in the COVID environment that we're currently in. And then, we also are participating in the restorative justice program. I think you heard earlier that we're a partner in that with other members throughout the city. We actively pursue educational rehabilitative opportunities for our defendants as well in order to try and reduce recidivism. And next slide, that kind of leads us into our request for a part-time court navigator that you have heard about before. The difference that you're noticing here is just simply, I believe, Social Security and Medicare costs were added into this amount. And that's based on an estimated $30,000 cost to get a half-time person. It's not a full-time request. This particular position would be specific to at-risk populations. And it would, we would be interfacing with these individuals after a case has been filed in court. So this kind of closes that gap between the police, restorative justice, and then having someone take the reins once a case is actually filed in court. The costs for this, which are not outlined in this presentation specifically, but we have an upcoming retirement in our office in September of this year. And we will not be filling that in order to be able to hire this part-time navigator, which we feel is a better use of community resources. We have individuals that come, and an example would be, we often have times where maybe all they need to do is get hooked up with the All Health, or they need to have their ID done. And having someone that actually walks them through that, has established a relationship with the at-risk populations in the community, we feel would essentially be cost savings over time. We have individuals that are in our court frequently. And if we can eliminate some of the time of the Police Department of going around to, you know, aiding them and doing community service options, those types of things, we really feel that this would be a benefit to the community. Initially, the focus for this position could, would be related towards COVID issues. Another example would be, sometimes it might be that a person needs to get tested or needs to get healthcare in order to even appear in court. And so, we envision this position, this person, whoever we potentially hire, of working on those types of issues too. The court navigator transportation and supply needs is not technically an increase. It is already included within our budget, we feel that we can compensate for that. None of our positions within the court resulted in being outside of the pay ranges. So, there's no increase for that. And then, our education and professional development support, we estimate to be maybe $8,500 this year. We have a couple of individuals that, this would go to tuition reimbursement, those types of things. And that pretty much covers it for me.
Thank you. Member Wink has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Wolf, for that information. So regarding the court navigator position, which interests me quite a bit, what percentage of the population you currently, you service or support, more appropriately, and have supported over maybe the past 10 years, has been represented by this population segment that you seek to support more directly through the court navigator position?
Well, I don't know that I have an actual percentage. You will find that you ask any court, and generally, there are certain case types and individuals that take up most of the time for any court, that you have to sort of take their hand and walk through the system, so to speak. The individuals have increased over the last year with the homelessness situation in the city. And COVID has even made it even worse, as far as people not being able to come to court for one reason or another. We have individuals that have multiple cases, and we feel that a court navigator would really assist in potentially resolving their issues rather than them having to be continued on a frequent basis. You know, they don't take the initiative for whatever reason, and having someone to help service those individuals could help resolve the situation and hopefully not continue to have police contact, maybe get them into some sort of rehabilitative situation. Oftentimes, it's mental health issues. I know we have All Health, that, you know, the first responders, that go out with the Police Department, and they are essential in those duties. I think being referred to All Health after the fact of an immediate situation can sometimes also be really helpful. I know Judge Jefferson spoke to that last week, how much of a great partner All Health has been for us. So, I don't have a percentage of the number of people that take up the most amount of our time, unfortunately.
Very good. It sounds as if while you're supporting this population, the many ways you just touched on yet again in answering the question I asked, it will result also in significant cost savings for the city. So, if you have the time to bake that collection of data into the program, should it move forward, I think it would be really valuable and probably very effective to show how much, you know, of a benefit it is to the population, to the city, to have a central person on a part-time basis performing this duty. So, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Wolf.
Thank you, absolutely. And I would just, Councilmember Wink, indicate that I would have more specifics for you, and will have more specifics for you once we get into our new software system. One is, it was implemented in 2003, and just does not have the capabilities to draw out such information. It's a lot of manual work to get anything like that out, so I apologize.
Not at all. Thank you so much.
I'm going to follow up on this one too. I feel like it's really important for us to have this data on the funding for this in particular, and what is it actually going to save us? Because I do think, I think you're trying to create a case for that, and it might very well be true. I mean, imagine it is. And it would be incredibly helpful to us with the Policy Committee on Homelessness for our courts to actually identify where are we spending money on numerous, but what people, I think, use derogatory terms for, your frequent flyers or whatever, the people who are repetitively coming back through the system. And I really would like to ask for that data before I feel comfortable supporting this position. I'd like to know, where are those really big gaps that we need this for? And I think they probably might be there, but you have to be able to figure that out in some way. Other cities have done that, to figure out where they can actually stop the financial bleeding when caring for people and just having, you know, a revolving door.
Right. I guess the one example I could give is that we have multiple individuals currently that have 20 cases that are open and pending. And they keep repeat offending. And they don't come to court, and warrants get issued. And it may be that there are 14 warrants that get issued on an individual because they didn't appear on a given day and time. So then, that could result in clerk time to issue all those. It results in, you know, a lot of personnel time to do that. I could probably come up with some sort of a scenario for, maybe give you an example of one individual case that if a person could intervene and get them to the services that they need, what that could be as a cost-saving to the city. Is that something that would be beneficial for you, Mayor?
I would, I would hope we could have more than just one case. I mean, if you, I mean, if you have five, 10 people that are like this, I would hope that we could take a look at what, you know, and of course, this is banking on a navigator actually helping them and helping it then make a difference. But yeah, I would like to see some of the finances on this, definitely. And I think Member Stone has a question. I'm not sure if it's related, it might be.
It is, yeah.
With similar interest in this, I think.
Yeah, and my interest is less in the financial end of it, but more in the raw numbers of how many people are going into these other services and how many people would benefit from this service? Because I'm willing to, you know, vote in favor of spending money if it's going to go towards a meaningful outcome. Even if it doesn't save us money in the long run, if it changes the outcome of these folks' lives and their interaction with the criminal justice system, I'm interested in that as well. So, I'd like to see, you know, maybe a breakdown of how many people are being diverted to All Health, how many people are being diverted to some of our nonprofit orgs in the area that are helping out with homelessness and various other issues that we find in this community, so that we can gauge how much impact having a court navigator would have.
Is that possible to do as well? I think that's really important data, to see what percent are we referring out to other kinds of? I mean, we heard a general overview last week, that some data would be really helpful.
All I can say is I will do my best. Like I say, I, yes, if this is something that Council needs to see in order to go forward with this, I will try to produce a document and get that back out to you.
Okay, great. A member Wink has another.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again. And it's not that we're picking on any particular component of our administration, but I believe the mayor may agree with me on this. I think it would be just exponentially valuable for us and for our management of our spending and our revenues and expenditures, just moving forward if we do become data-minded all around. And if, when we present a need, we have really looked at the numbers that support that need or numbers that show how valuable that need is. So, it's just something I'm hoping becomes a natural part of our thinking and our logic in the city. So, thank you, Ms. Wolf, for getting those data points together for us. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'll go a little bit more, because I think Member Stone brought up some good things. The end result of this is to help people stay out of the system and to help them get the help they need. And so, being able to tell the story a little bit more with numbers and how many you're having to deal with in an ongoing basis, I think would be really useful. We're looking at the same things within the Police Department, you know, who are some of the repeated kinds of folks that we're seeing that we can maybe have a different approach with. And ultimately, the goal really is, I think, what Member Stone is talking about, helping people live more successful lives and not be caught up in our systems of courts and policing. And I know that's a toll order, and that's not, you know, your ultimate goal is to actually execute justice too. And we've got to figure out the right way to do that, so there's fairness and justice for everybody. So, thanks for any more data you can give on that.
Certainly.
I think that those are the only questions. So, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, so next up is Director Hanger.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am happy to announce that the entire HR budget will actually decrease in 2021. We're going to see a slight decline in both the personnel and commodity line items and the small increase to the contractual service, which I'll take you through on the next couple of slides. But in terms of the 2021 priorities, we're looking at the UltiPro, or I'm sorry, the Ultimate Software, which is the UltiPro platform that we are implementing right now. And as we move into 2021, the HRIS module, or the piece of that, which is actually the employee data management, is really going to simplify how HR manages the employee data and documents and provides the ability to create and access and share files. When we look at the payroll administration, our initiative there is really the functional payroll engine that'll handle our complex payroll requirements. So that will help tremendously. In terms of the benefits administration, we're going to be hopefully moving to the benefits prime piece of this. And that's really going to provide an intuitive benefit enrollment experience for our employees, really help them, guide them, and make them, and allow them to make well-informed benefit choices for themselves and their families. And then, the time clock management, this is really going to provide an easy-to-use and efficient time clock for our hourly employees. It's really, it's going to take the place of our current and confusing time clock plus system. In terms of performance management, I'll get to that in just a few bullets. But recruitment, when we look at that, it's going to expand our recruiting processes on several, by several ways. One, supporting the candidate much better during the process, but also attracting and hiring and developing the best talent for the city. And then, it also comes with an onboarding module that's going to help new employees connect in a way that's more personal to them and impactful, which will increase engagement of our new hires. And then finally, on the UltiPro front, the compensation and management piece of this is really going to complement our recent compensation study by providing a configurable process that's really going to help us reward our employees. When I look at the initiative for the city policy review, and I think Allison touched on this a little bit, I may have mentioned this last time as well, but the policies currently, they're outdated and they need to be reviewed and really modernized. We're going to look to really tie the language more closely with the EEA and the EPDA agreement, just to get everybody on the same playing field. When we look at the performance management process, we're really going to be looking at a solution that's going to allow our leaders to set goals and assess performance, gather feedback, and evaluate employees on an ongoing basis. And this is also going to, in this module, we're also going to have succession management, which is going to create a proactive plan for professional growth and career advancement for all of our employees. The supervisor training initiative, this is going to remain one of our focus in 2021. This is going to help our, and Allison did touch on this, this is really going to help our city stay out of the courtroom. And just by having supervisors And just by having supervisors trained on some basic employment law, um, it'll help mitigate that risk. But also having our supervisors trained in some skills, that will help improve our employee retention and also any of those, uh, costs that are gonna be associated with turnover. And then, um, the last thing on this slide is the EEA and the EPBA relationships. Um, with the employee associations, so far, 2020 has been a pretty good year. All of the grievances, uh, when I came, when I was hired on, all of the 2019 grievances that were already, so to speak, on the books have been resolved, I'm, I'm happy to say. And there are no new grievances to date. So I'm, I'm pretty proud of that fact. With the, uh, police association, we're currently, um, underway on that two-year contract and we'll get that submitted for signatures. Uh, but it's really gonna be important that I nurture these relationships along the way and really have a good connection with both of these associations. Uh, when we look at the operational requests, so, um, I'm, I'm going to be requesting, uh, training and development specialists. This is someone who's gonna be solely responsible for training, not only for supervisors, but also for our employees as well. And this really is gonna increase our retention, increase our motivation, decrease our turnover. Um, I think our, our training and development will keep employees engaged. And really, you know, I mean, uh, we all know that engagement is key to performance and retention. So, um, I'm asking for that additional FTE. Along with that, our payroll specialist, uh, has been positioned in the finance function. So we transitioned, uh, that piece of that to finance and we'll see that decrease in the HR budget. In terms of, um, our operator, uh, yeah, the operational request, the program and the service level changes, um, I'm, one of the big things is the UltiPro functionality, um, functionality. We negotiated some subscription costs to save money and, and we delayed some implementation there. You see a $58,000 savings there. We, uh, the old recruiting platform, which is NeoGov, that's gonna be replaced by the UltiPro recruiting module. We'll see some savings there. Um, we would like to add the learning module, which is an increase of 30,000. But, um, you know, we're going to, um, we're gonna need to have a solution that's going to help this training and development person, um, really modernize our learning experiences and our approach to training and development and really provide the tools and the functionality to go along with that. Um, additional FTE. Um, we're also wanting to add the retirement benefit. That's, um, the, the way we would process payroll for our retirees. Uh, and then we would, um, be reducing other professional services to offset those proposed additions by a little over $8,000. I would like to note that we would like to move to the, I mentioned earlier, we wanted to move to benefits prime. This is going to replace liaison, which, um, will, um, give us an annual savings of $10,000. Um, the next part of this is the compensation study. Um, we are requesting, I am requesting additional funds to move several of my staff into the correct quartile and the pay ranges. Um, and so that's a, a little over $27,000. And then finally, the employee education or the professional development piece of that, uh, I'm gonna request dollars to continue to develop my staff. We need to continue our education on our SPHR or our PHR certificates. And, uh, my benefits person, um, is doing a certification in employee benefits or SEBS. And so we're requesting some dollars to continue our, uh, education in those certifications.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments?
So at the end of the day, it's a $14,000 savings still, after all these changes.
Hmm, um, 14,000. So we've got the, um,
I'm looking at the very first slide again. Did I misinterpret what you said?
Oh, no, no. Uh, I think you're right. So yes, at the end of the day, I'm sorry. I was thinking, which part did I tell you 14,000? I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, so, so at the end of the day, with, um, all of these changes, it's going to be 14,000.
Great, great, great work here. Any, I don't see any other questions from anyone. Anybody else? No. Thank you, Director, uh, Director Hanger.
Thank you.
You're muted.
I realized that. I said I'm muted. All right. So, um, for the finance department, um, go forward, Jenny. Um, so for the finance department, um, we are, um, going to be requesting an FTE and we explained that in May for the business licensing tech. We also have assumed, can you please go back? Yeah. We also have assumed, um, the cost of the payroll specialist. So that position transferred into, um, finance through, in this year, actually. And that will be one of the supplemental appropriations we ask for. Um, but going into next year, that would be the, the full year, um, of that position. And then, of course, the increases. So the personnel is increasing 250,000, um, with a new FTE request and that transfer. Um, we have a slight decrease in commodities and contractual services, um, approximately $10,000 less. So the total increase for finance is approximately 238,000. All right, move forward. And you can see, um, the types of priorities or initiatives that we are working on next year. Um, again, continue to implement the universal, uh, business licensing, licensing, um, efforts that, um, you, we approved last year. And, and we found with COVID, actually, it was very helpful to have this because we wanted to identify the businesses that, um, were operating within the city of Englewood. Um, so we find that this is, um, gonna be worthwhile, um, not only for, um, the city, but also for our businesses. And you can see it's supporting the, um, economy and also good governance. Uh, we are going to, um, continue to work on the utility billing system, um, improvements, um, new system with the complete, with the, um, expectation of completing that implementation, um, early, um, 2021. Um, we have been supporting and will continue to support the Public Works and Utilities bonding initiatives if we decide to move forward, um, with those. Um, as I mentioned, we did assume the payroll processing responsibilities as of, uh, the end of May. And, um, I am also working, um, with the support of the finance team on evaluating our administrative policies with, um, other directors on the team. And we are updating them as determined necessary. Um, and we are also, um, supporting the Training and Development Task Force. And, um, we are working in partnership with the, uh, with human resources and a team, cross-functional team across the city to, um, uh, deliver to, to the city manager a plan, uh, for 2021, relationship to what needs we have, um, as a city in training and development. All right, Jenny? All right. So here are the costs, um, the payroll specialist. This isn't an increase in cost for the city. It's an increase in cost solely for finance. Um, Director Hanger showed the decline in her budget. And then, um, the FTE that we're asking for is a technician two. And there are the costs associated with this. Um, when we presented this position, when we were asking for the ordinance to be passed, um, we actually set forth, um, the revenue impact to the city if, um, would more than offset the cost of this particular position. The way that we, um, actually piece this together this year, as you recall, we had an amnesty period, um, through the end of this year. But we still had a lot of increased volume, um, in the department to process business licenses. And we augmented staff with a part-time resource that we was borrowed, um, from Parks and Rec. She's been outstanding, um, but she is expected to go back to Parks and Rec next year. And then also we had, um, an internal staff member that actually, um, was cross-trained on this effort. Um, that can continue. However, it, because we've been in the amnesty period, we have had lower volume than we expect going forward outside of, um, that amnesty period. So we expect the volume to increase even more. Uh, so we'll, we'll continue to cobble that together. But my, my, um, recommendation to city council is that we do staff, um, accordingly because we do, um, we do need this position in order to, um, manage the workload of the, um, business, uh, licensing task. All right. Um, so along with that, um, you know, there would be costs associated with, um, hiring an FTE. We've estimated that to be about, um, $10,000. Um, we don't know at this point, um, if there will be costs associated with the task force rollout um, or supporting the utilities bond initiative. Um, we do have costs in the budget for financial support going into next year, just like we did this year. No increase estimated right now, but I wanted to put those as placeholders in the event that there could be an increase in costs. Um, and we would, obviously, the task force rollout, we would try to maintain that within, um, the current budget level that is appropriated. But I wanted to put that out there that that might be an efficiency that we gather or we garner as we move forward into next year because it is going to, um, require some time and perhaps some, uh, additional resources. Um, I, um, in the evaluation of the compensation study and survey results, um, we did not have any employees that were not at the minimum. So there's no impact there. And we have included, um, $13,250 for employee education and professional development support. Included in that is continuing education requirements that we have for our CPAs and also for our, uh, revenue specialists, um, you know, for, for, um, certain certifications that they have related to fraud, et cetera. There is continuing education that's required, um, on their part. So that budget, um, is included in that amount. Um, and one other point that I wanted to make, um, as you will recall, um, we will, in, on November 3rd, have a ballot issue for the lodgers tax increase. Um, so we said that it's currently at 2%. Um, the proposal on the ballot will be to increase it to 5%. That increase will be, um, yet determined. So this is the first rate, fee change and revenue impact that, um, we're showing here tonight. I've put it to be determined because, um, we have not included, um, any revenue related to this, uh, potential increase to lodgers tax in our revenue assumptions, given the uncertainty of whether or not it would be passed. So anything that we would receive would be above and beyond the current revenues. All right. Um, I had mentioned a capital projects tracking system in our meeting in May. Um, we have estimated approximately $100,000. It's not currently in the recommended list. So this would be an add-on. And I mentioned what the benefits would be. You know, we have very disparate systems right now, which make any updates to any capital plans, um, very tedious. Um, and the communication has to be done via email. And it's done via SharePoint, um, on multiple documents. So, um, I am recommending to council that, um, you give us an opportunity within finance to research potential capital project systems that hopefully would cost less than a hundred thousand. And we've certainly leveraged, um, any software that we currently have. I think we have a meeting with OpenGov next week to talk about their tracking system. Um, but we would, um, like to recommend that we do fund this, um, some level going forward into 2021. And with that, I will ask, um, you if you have any questions.
Questions, council? While they're putting their hands up, I'm gonna ask you a question about this last one. So the tracking system, it, we have OpenGov right now, right?
We do. We just don't use this particular module.
So it would be an added cost that they would open up?
It would.
Okay. So then it would definitely be under a hundred thousand, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Who knows?
We just haven't seen it yet. So I didn't want to recommend it because I haven't seen it yet. So I don't know the functionality. I don't know if it would meet all of our needs.
So I, I'm really, I, I'm just a little bit nervous for all these different tracking systems. Um, is there any way to have more court, I mean, do they speak to each other? The ones that the clerk was talking about and then this one and then others? I'm just wondering, can they talk to each other?
Well, I think that they serve different purposes. Um, but I think that was one of the reasons why we wanted to, um, actually meet with OpenGov. Because as you know, um, you know, our, our city's checkbook is OpenGov and a lot of our, um, you know, visuals of the financials for the public are held in that system. So certainly that would be an efficiency gained by that. But when you're talking about a financial system, particularly, you know, a capital project system, of course, we would, we would want to, if we could, attach it to, um, other systems within, um, the, the other departments like Public Works that have significant capital spend. If there were, was an asset management system linking to something like that, but that might be down the road. I, I think that the financial systems in a lot of ways do talk to these other systems. Um, and that poses some challenges to the integration themselves. But it's certainly something that we'll continue to speak to. And perhaps, uh, Director Brocklander, when she gets to her section, could it also share a little bit more about, you know, the fact that we do integrate when we can, but not all of these do the same thing. So that makes it challenging.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any others have questions? I don't see any. So I wonder if this is a good time to take a quick break. It's about three minutes to eight. Why don't we come back at about 8:05? Take a stretch. I need to turn lights on or all of a sudden I'm gonna disappear. All right. Let's take a, a, a break until 8:05. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Do we have everybody back? Did we lose anybody? Member Russell, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Number Stone, yeah, I can see you, I mean, I can hear you.
I, uh, okay, maybe this is, okay. Hopefully, this will work.
Yep, there you are. Everybody's on now, all right, great. Thanks, everybody, for letting me take a break. Director Sabata, go ahead and get us going on the next one.
So I, okay, so I will ask Director Brocklander to review the information technology department budget.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you. So the overview of the IT department budget does show an increase for 2021. $568,516. The increases are primarily due to the personnel increases for salaries, benefits, as well as the completion of the GIS reorganization that I'll cover in the upcoming service level slide. And then contractual services. That increase is due to several systems that were or will be implemented in 2021. And some of those systems include Zoom, DocuSign, the new permitting and land system that will be coming before you shortly, the body cameras, the survey software, and several others. In addition to the annual support and maintenance increases for the existing systems. And next slide. The initiatives for IT include the data and security privacy. This is an ongoing initiative. The priority in 2020 was upgrading and replacing network equipment and improving the stability of the security of the network. And in 2021, the emphasis will be increased logging for better visibility on the network and fine tuning to continually improve and move from reactive to proactive. To research and implement encryption technologies as well as multi-factor authentication and with an overarching goal of protecting the data and the systems from threats. Automation of business processes is automating and modernizing business processes. And this is also an ongoing initiative. IT is always working on projects to automate. Current projects include the permitting and land system, utility billing system. GIS is working on geo-locating assets. The additional functionality in the human resources system that Rhonda mentioned earlier in her presentation. The planned asset tracking for Public Works, as well as several other projects that come up across the department. And then lastly is the cybersecurity awareness. Previously, we implemented the online cybersecurity training, which was very well received. And in 2021, we'd like to take that to the next level and introduce phishing campaigns to test users' knowledge, as well as fine tune the cyber training modules based on users' job duties. Next slide. Service level changes. The last step to finalizing the reorganization of GIS into a centralized division under the IT department is reallocating the salary for GIS, the salary and the benefits from utilities into the IT GIS division. Also, next year, we'll be finalizing mail services that was transitioned from IT to the library. So this line item is moving the postage from IT's budget over to the library's budget. And then the compensation study results resulted in moving employees into the correct quartile, resulting with some salary adjustments. And then the tuition reimbursement, or now employee education and professional development. There are several staff members that do require professional development and certifications to stay current with technology. This is not an increase in our budget, this is the amount that we have budgeted in previous years. Next slide. And then the capital projects. The three projects that were recommended for IT is the workstation refresh, continued improvements to IT infrastructure, as well as the fiber network. And then the next slide, so questions?
All right, council, questions? That was quick. I'm, I'm trying to figure out the total for where it all came from. Something seems out of, I didn't add these, right? But the total is 568,000 extra in point five, right?
Yes.
And most of that's in personnel, I mean, it's personnel and contracts.
The majority is in the contractual services, which is the support and maintenance agreement contracts.
Yeah, and those are really fixed, like every year those go up, is that right?
Those are fixed, they do have annual increases, anywhere from 3% to 5%. However, we did add quite a few new systems.
Okay. Thank you. Member Anderson heads hand up.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Director Brocklander. The, could you explain why the GIS position is moving from utilities to your department?
Yes, so earlier this year, GIS was centralized under IT. Previously, it was decentralized across the departments. Reporting, it is centralized under IT, but salary was left in utilities and will be moved over to IT in 2021.
Mayor, do you mind if I add a little?
Yes, please do, my hunch is you're asking for the philosophy of that as well, right?
Yeah. Yes, thank you, and that's a great question. You may remember when we reorganized the South Platte Renew organization with the utilities department. Those were not merged, but we did put a director over both, one director over both departments. One of the other changes, in addition to creating a stormwater division in Public Works that was split out of utilities, is we also took the GIS staff member that was dedicated just to utilities and put them into IT. And my philosophy, and I think both for Director Van Rij, as well as Director Brocklander, is really a centralized GIS department is a more effective GIS department. They can serve all departments as opposed to every department having its own. We also think it actually, over time, reduces costs because it's much more expensive for every department to have their own GIS staff member. And many cities have that system. I would rather start now with consolidating everyone in a GIS division under IT.
Okay, so they, that would have been the, if we were going to distribute it among the departments, it would have been three or four departments that would have had a GIS person or part-time person or something like that. So this just allows one, it all to live in one place, that makes sense.
And share resources between departments, right?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Member Wink.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Director Brocklander. Would you kindly say a little bit more about the disaster recovery $55,000 line item? Yep. Yep.
The capital project for disaster recovery, that is to set up a alternative data center site. Hopefully, at another municipality somewhere in the metro area, but quite a distance from our existing data center site, which is at Civic Center. So should there be a disaster anywhere near Civic Center, we would be able to have all systems up and running fairly quickly.
Great, so alternate location of a backup data center. So would there be anything else? Because I know that during a disaster, key staff, probably Director Sabata and DeAndre, there are certain staff members on our leadership team that are going to need immediate communication lines directly using, using the data that comes from that data center. Are you, it's kind of peripheral to this, but does that come along with it? Are you planning that as well? Sure, the data will be there, but how are we connecting to it? Should, should we get into that position?
Yes, so this line item is for hardware for us to set up an alternative site. And the communications to the alternative site would be carrier services so that all leadership would have connectivity to systems and communications. Does that answer your question?
I didn't hear it, but I don't want to take the whole meeting. What did you say? How, how will, how will the software integrate? I mean, you're, I just want to know that you're integrating the software to this in the event of an emergency, so that connections always, it's just an area where there can be hiccups and a disaster wouldn't be a time when we want to be ironing out those kinds of details, basically. I understand the difference between softer and harder.
Yes, so the software is all of our systems backed up. This line item is, for the most part, hardware so that we can recover those backups onto that hardware and get all systems up and running.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, Member Russ, Member Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I don't know if this question is for you, Director Brocklander, perhaps the city manager. Why is the city postage being moved from Parks, Rec and Library to IT?
I can answer that. Mail services has been under IT for several years. And we have slowly been transitioning mail services over to the library. We completed the reporting structure. This line item is the last piece, which is allocating the budget for postage machine. This is allocating it from IT over to the library.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
So it's just moving it, right? That's all, it's not a change in anything?
It's not a change in budget, it's just moving it from one department to the other.
Mayor Partemscera?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Brocklander, you stated that there were three recommended capital projects, but I actually see four. The fourth being the security camera video server. Is this separate than what we're discussing with the police department regarding dash cams? Or could you elaborate a little bit on that item?
You're right, my, I made a mistake there, I only saw the first three. The security camera video server, this is for the security cameras that are planned for service center, civic center, rec center, library. We've put quite a few cameras in, and we do not have the space to continue to add more servers. This is a server dedicated to our security cameras. This is not related to the, the body cams or the dash cams for police.
Yeah, perfect, no, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
All right, that looks like the end of the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will move on with Director Power reviewing the community development department budget.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Despite the, well, I should say that we are working through a pretty ambitious work plan in community development in 2020, and we have an equally ambitious one planned for next year. And you see a requested increase of our budget of 2021 over 2020 of approximately $383,000. The increase is primarily accounted toward the work in contractual services, which would be toward the Title 16 Unified Development Code work. And in personnel, the compensation plan adjustment, salary and benefits adjustments that were covered earlier in the meeting by Director Hanger. Next. In terms of our priorities and initiatives, several of these are going to span multiple years and have so already. The facilitation of city center redevelopment, including the downtown matters, potential DDA implementation. City center, you'll still hear words from us in terms of our pace of progress with our developer partner, SKB, later on in the fall. And we're trending toward a redevelopment agreement with them, hopefully, probably in early 2021. I just mentioned the Title 16 work is going to be continuing into next year with a potential redraft of the entire code. And as you're aware, we've already kicked off the community assessment this, this summer into this fall. Online permitting, this is budgeted actually for this year, but the rollout again will probably be in 2021 for our software replacement, which will enable much more online processing of our plans specifically, excuse me, on the building department side. And finally, on this slide, the Business Assistance Web Portal. This will be a new Business Assistance Web presence, which would enable more one-stop shopping for folks who are looking for business information and information about our business and economic development programs. Next slide. We do have one, one job request that's on the table, and that would be for a halftime zoning inspector. Zoning enforcement cases are increasing. And you may also recognize that fact by the, by the fact that constituents are contacting you, each of you, on, it seems like code matters, so the, the pace of investigations is increasing for comparison. In 2019, we had 31 zoning code investigation cases between January and this time. And so this year, so far, we've had 59 cases. So you see that there's a requisite increase in the caseload that's being, that's being phoned into and reported to our, to our office. And that's the basis for that, that FTE request. Again, it's a half, that would be a halftime zoning inspector. Next slide. In terms of the level of change in some In terms of the level of change in some of our programs, the Title 16, as you're very much familiar, we've given you this estimate before. The rewrite of that ordinance would be approximately $250,000. Professional services for the Downtown Matters City Center redevelopment, which would include ongoing, probably outside legal consulting expenses, particularly related to developing that redevelopment agreement with SKB in the first part of next year. A lot of that would probably be for legal expenses. The trolley increase is about $15,000 to operate the trolley next year over this year. So you see that expense in there as well. And we would propose to use an outside contractor to help us enable the development of the business web portal. Continuing on, our rail trail grant match. The Walk and Wheel Program has identified several rail trails and other walk and bike improvements around the community. This would be a reserve amount that we could match potential grants that would be coming from primarily the state and federal governments in 2021. So we would build in some matching opportunities and facilitation for that. As you well know, short-term rentals, we are actively monitoring and permitting short-term rentals in the community now. And we partner with a group called Lodging Revs to do our monitoring on a continual basis on that. And that increase is approximately $2,000 in that contract over this year. Our compensation study results, our impact in terms of the employees in the new quartiles is just under $19,000. And employee education development support is listed as $8,000, and that is unchanged from this year. And pretty much every one of our employees is certified in something, either through the International Co-Council or the American Institute of Certified Planners on the planning side of our department. And so that budget is reflective there for $8,000. Again, no change. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions, council? Go ahead, Mayor Partemira.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Power, can you speak a little bit about the responsibilities of the zoning FTE? And I'm assuming that's 20 hours per week for the entire year, correct?
Correct. That person would be our new lead on the intake and investigation and coordinating the response for all of our zoning code investigations. Those can run the gamut from just communicating the issue with the property owner, and the property owner can take care of it from there. We also can... The next step would be to issue a notice of violation. So there's more of a formal process that the property owner is made aware of. They're given a certain amount of time to correct the violations that are noted. And then the most aggressive format would be that we actually cite them to municipal court if there's no resolution through the notice of violation process. So that person would be working with our planning manager to coordinate the department's response to those issues and also to work with code enforcement in terms of any code enforcement actions as well. Because we found a lot of the linkage between zoning cases. Austin has an equal linkage with zoning or with code enforcement cases as well.
Okay. And can you run through the metrics again? Did you say there's 59 as of this time? As of now, for year-to-date 2020, what was the number previously?
I said that a little quickly. I apologize. So last year, from January to this time in mid-August, we had 31 cases. And so far this year, we're at 59 cases.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Do you remember how many was 2019 altogether?
I have that. I don't have it in front of me. We can get that to you. But if you look at the trend, it was probably where we are now for all of 19.
59. I'd be curious about what it was last year total.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you. Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. So Director Power, are you currently using code enforcement for what the zoning inspector would do? And will this eliminate the need for code enforcement in your department?
We are doing all of the code work that's related to what's in Title 16 in our department. So our planning manager is kind of the case manager of it, and he is assisted by the planning staff. And we coordinate with code enforcement. In terms of where this position may land, the city manager and I have talked about the possibility of integrating it into the code enforcement division. But we haven't finalized that yet. We've made the request based on the escalating nature of the cases that are coming down the line from the zoning side.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Stone, with your hand... Never so... With your hand up, and I missed it. Okay, good. I thought I saw something come up and go down. All right, that looks like that's it. Get on. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for the time.
All right, so Director DeAndre is next with the Public Works Department budgets.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. So first, the overview. As you can see, there's a significant increase in personnel costs, and that's primarily related to the fact that we have a significant number of EEA employees. So that is, as Director Sabata mentioned at the beginning, that's a set fee increase. Our commodities and contractual services are going down. And then the capital expenses have increased as well. And that's primarily, I would say, probably three-quarters of that is associated with our traffic division. So we do do a significant amount of work in-house with our city staff. And so those are the expenses associated primarily with our signals, new different types of equipment to upgrade those and maintain those on a regular basis. And the remainder, probably 25% of that, is associated with increased SURF allocations for the Public Works Department. Our priorities and initiatives for the year are focused on, again, kind of working... Planning our work and working our plans. So alley maintenance, as we've done over the last year, and then preventative and corrective pavement maintenance, again, using that zone system for all of our work, and focusing again on our asset management overall. So we are in the process of issuing an RFP for assessing our pavements. And then we'll be collecting data on our street signs and sidewalks as well. Doing sidewalk maintenance in association with our corrective pavement maintenance zone in Zone 3, which is essentially the northwest portion of town. Making sure that we're continually making sure that we have compliance in all of our facilities with ADA upgrading pedestrian ramps at a certain number per year. We will be completing construction of the Oxford Pedestrian Bridge. We're currently just starting the design of that right now. And then we're... We hope to complete in 2021 the design for the interchange of 285 and Broadway so that construction would begin early in 2022. We would continue with our storm sewer cleaning and televising program as well as continuing to move forward with designing and construction of various storm sewer projects. And we plan to look more thoroughly at our vehicle and equipment program and evaluate that to make sure we're allocating monies correctly to different departments, collecting those on a regular basis. But also, how are we replacing our vehicles? Are we replacing them soon enough? What's that right time, if you will, to replace those? As well as looking at the larger equipment, like front-end loaders, backhoes, that sort of thing, and whether it'd be more cost-effective to lease those instead of buying them outright. And finally, we are requesting two traffic technicians for our traffic division. We're requesting two because they typically do work in pairs for safety reasons. One's typically up in the bucket truck while one's on the ground, making sure that things are safe. And really, this request comes out of the fact that we've evaluated all of our work within the traffic division. And there are some things that we're partially doing now and that we would like to do more completely, such as maintaining our signal maintenance or doing our signal maintenance, upgrading our signal equipment, as well as the opticom, which is the little signal that the fire department uses to change the signals as they drive through. Also doing more school flasher maintenance. So those are the things that we're doing partially now that we would like to do more fully. And there's just some things that we aren't able to get to. For example, in 2019, we did no crosswalk markings at all. We are reallocating some resources this year to do some crosswalk marking. That was in Manager Lewis's update last Friday. But also the pet-activated signals, our electronic speed limit signs, really, those have received no maintenance over the last couple of years, as well as the decorative lighting. So those are the things that we would focus on with these two additional positions. And then, as it says there, TBD, we are in the process of evaluating our proposals for organized garbage collection with our Citizens Committee. If that was to go through, we would amend the budget in 2021. So right now, we're not allocating or requesting any resources for that program until there a decision has been made to either move forward or not. We have no costs associated with the compensation study. And then there is a significant cost there, as you can see, for employee education and professional development. And that's focused on really two areas. Our facilities maintenance staff, getting them some more specialized training for our five facilities maintenance techs, as well as then continuing professional education for our professional engineers within the capital projects and engineering division. And then our service center fund. So these monies are collected from all the departments who use facilities at or have their personnel and equipment at the service center. So as you can see, there are the most significant cost increases for capital expenses. And I believe there's a slide coming up here that explains that in more detail. We are investing... Yeah, if you could go ahead, Jenny, I think one more or two more slides, and we'll come back to SURF. So here you can see, for the service center, we're planning to do some building repair and upgrades, remodeling the upper level of the administration building and kind of remodeling the locker rooms up there. There is no women's locker room currently, as well as upgrading the restrooms and the break room. We would replace another equipment lift within the fleet bays. And then on the site itself, we're planning to install some drainage improvements to hold back the stormwater in accordance with our new drainage criteria manual and then replacing some of the asphalt at the same time. So that's the most significant cost there. And then, yeah, going back to the SURF funds, you can see... There we go. Thank you. And you can see that our 2020 budget for vehicle and equipment replacement was about 2.2 million. That was what we planned to expend this year on vehicles and equipment. And that's going down by about half for next year. So we feel like we've caught up a little bit. We would like to see that more level over time, and that will come through our evaluation. So it's not quite so up and down throughout the years. But you can see there's a significant drop between 2020 and 2021. We went over that one. And then the various projects. You can see there, a significant number of those were approved. The Dartmouth Bridge widening, which is the number shown in red, was approved up to about $430,000. We have been doing some value engineering to work within that budget. And so we're hopeful that we can bid that project later this year for construction beginning in spring of 2021 at that lower dollar amount. And then again, I think these are the projects. So traffic signal equipment replacement. This is for kind of bigger elements, like the traffic controllers, rather than the little cameras here and there that I mentioned earlier that are part of the operating budget. And then we will continue with our US 285 congestion mitigation study next year, as well as an ADA audit of all city facilities. And here, this is a summary slide just showing where those various capital requests are coming from each fund. So we're planning to expend, is that about $4.3 million next year? And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments, anyone? Looks like it's clear as everything. On to the next.
All right, so Police Chief Collins, if you could talk about the Police Department's budget.
Will do. The last time we talked, I had a very sparse budget presentation, but it's kind of grown here over the last several months. What you see before you is the first category is the Fire and Emergency Management Services. And those are essentially the contracts. And so within those contracts, there are stipulations as to what their annual increases would be. And that here is laid out in that particular chart. Under Police Services, what you see is, I think, the largest chunk of an increase is about $647,000. Within that, it is the request for a media specialist. And then there is some savings, actually, within this category as well. So the overall increase for the Police Department would be $566,000. And like I said, essentially, that is all personnel-driven. Can I have the next slide, please? This is the bulk of what I really wanted to talk about this evening. The shared records management system, you've heard this before. We hope to have that up and running by October. The other organizations that have gone live, such as Littleton, so far, so good. So I would hope that the same process works well for us as well. And then I would kind of lump the next three together because the homelessness, the co-responder program, organizational change, and resort of justice are fairly significant challenges for us, not only next year, but the coming years. And that would include the culture change, if you will, that we've been discussing for a long time for our Police Department, as well as those throughout the country. So we'll be trying to develop a strategic plan that addresses all of these significant topics as they come to fruition over the course of the next year. And then on the bottom, we have the Fox Building renovation. The good news is that a big chunk of that expense that would come out of the building project was the work on the roof. But with Bearcat, that was the reason for some of the significant costs. However, we found out that that will drive into the building itself now. And so that will, in and of itself, save some significant money from that fund. Jenny, the next slide, please. Here you have what's happened over the course of the last several months. And I believe all of these moves were appropriate. They've moved the Fire Marshal's Office back to the Police Department. The oversight of the emergency management contract back to the Police Department, or actually where it should be. And then finally, the Fire Division, Denver Fire and Denver Health, is now under our roof as well. And so we went, essentially, from a $14 million budget, I think it's around $22 now. But these are the primary reasons that you and the community would have to understand to figure that why the significant job. For the compensation study, we had several employees that needed to be brought up to where they needed to be according to the study. And then the employee education and professional development support is fairly large. But that includes the colleges, the college training that our folks continue to go through. And he doesn't know, but I'll kind of brag a little bit. One of my sergeants just this year got his doctorate, and quite an achievement. And so just to let you know that this program is working. And he's been working towards that for quite some time. And there you go, three slides, but there was a lot of information in there. So I suspect there'll be some questions.
I don't see any hands yet, but I want to know what the PhD was in.
Oh, I believe it was in criminal justice and something else. Yeah, he did really well with that. So instead of calling him sergeant, I got to call him doctor now.
Call him Sergeant Doctor.
There you go.
All right, Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Collins. Um, I, the question that I have is about the Fox building renovation. I thought that we had put that all in the bond money to do that.
That's, that's where it is.
Okay. So, but we've not, we've not got it done yet. It's going to go into 2021?
Yes, yes. And that's. You know, that's, we've been in consultation with Director DeAndrea about that, and it'll happen. But, you know, at that, at some point in time that, you know, I suspect in 21, we'll, we'll see some progress.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you. So. Were you requesting an increase for the coresponders program in there? Is that something that goes through the police department?
Well, you know what, I, I apologize. I'm not sure if I, if I walked over that, that position. The media specialist is the position that I'm asking for. Thank you for bringing that up. The body worn camera program is a, is an unfunded mandate from, from the state under Senate Bill 217. And the funding for that will come out of the police building, the building fund. What we originally looked at for, for the folks to manage that project were your media specialists. And the original memo called out for John, I think it was three specialists. I thought two would do at the time. And, and I'm focusing on one. And, and the reason being is because I, I need, we don't know which program we're going to buy yet. And so there are some that, that I can get by with, with one. And there are others, we, you know, as, as time will tell, we may need to hire somebody further on down the road. But I, I, I think with one, I'll have the backbone. It's somebody permanent there to run that program, get it off the ground and, and do all those, those mandates that are required by the district attorney and, and, and there's a lot of, a lot of things that we're going to have to be, I think, I believe it's within 48 hours, we're going to have to, we're going to be required to provide data to the community. And so I gotta hire somebody that, that can do that, you know, right away. And it's a challenge. It's a very challenging job because you're talking about data that's, that's approved 20, 24/7. And that data is, is in some cases downloaded and had, it has to be managed by one person to get that, all these various sources, like especially the DA's office. We work with them daily on, on trying to get data to them. So.
Chief, I think he was asking about the co-responder program and whether you were adding personnel there.
If I could just in on there, we actually are really just prepared to take that direction from city council. We have not heard that yet specifically, but I think the police department and, and our office are more than prepared to do that when and if directed. Councilmember Stone.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we're on to the next department.
And next is Director Underhill.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. As you can see, we have a $59,000 increase in our budget from 2020 to 2021. That's primarily due to the request for the park ranger position. Our staff have already gone through a budget analysis and had reductions done of over $200,000. So you could have expected a lot more with that. But 59,000 covers our new park ranger in addition to a few other things. Go ahead, go to the next slide. You've seen this before. These are the, the four initiatives that we're looking to do next year. The broken T irrigation system, getting the design done for that will give us an idea of what the overall cost for the renovation will be. We're going to continue to do marketing and increase our strategies on how to reach out to the community to stay relevant. I mentioned before, the library's redirected some funds. We'll be looking at adding a teen area into the library to increase our teen programming, recreation is doing the same, virtual programming's working in our favor for those ages so far. Also, the increase in our remote and virtual offerings, that's something we've been forced into this year. It wasn't necessarily we're taking full charge at, but really these initiatives are to evolve our programs and keep them relevant and attractive, to keep people active and engaged, and increase their quality of life within Inglewood. Go to the next slide. These are the two positions we're asking for, for next year. One, just a half position, but it's the park ranger. That includes all the salary benefits, truck, all the equipment they need. And that's just one position. And the other one is a recreation assistant with the Inglewood Recreation Center. Next slide. So these are all of the new programs for next year. Holiday lighting and flower pots on Broadway, that's our main thoroughfare. We do this annually. The Planet Geo Software is another one we're adding in for our parks division. That's not only going to help with the Emerald Ash Four, but also just efficiency in our systems and plant identification. We, Director Brocklander mentioned the city postage is coming from IT over to the library system, which has been running the mail now for a year. That just rounds that budget out. This is a reminder that the MOA contract is actually in our city council budget, but next year it'll be $24,000. We did have four full-time staff and three part-time staff that the compensation study will be addressing and bringing them up to above minimum for their range. And then the 52,000 goes to training, just as other divisions have said, for our different programs, especially our parks division needs training annually and certifications. Next slide. Our golf course is looking at increasing fees next year, 5% increase that really equates to one to $2 per round. So it goes from $37 to 39 for a weekend round of golf. But we're hoping next year we'll increase our revenue. Again, we haven't increased our fees at the golf course since 2018. So it's been a couple of years and it's, it's due. Next slide. And this is just overview of the golf course. They're not increasing much. They have also looked at some cuts. Their revenue this year is actually doing pretty decent through COVID. We're only down 11%. So we hope we can catch up and invest in some of the programs at the golf course. This is our capital project list. Much of this is an annual program that will roll over year after year if it's not all spent. So if we do nothing at Pirates Cove through the Conservation Trust Fund, it rolls over to the next year. But we do have monies to do some improvements throughout our division in 2021. Next slide. Same thing. These are all annual programs that we budget for. We don't always use like grant matching. We may not use annually, but we have it there if we do find a grants. We are going after a grant for Jason Park to do some renovations there. So we may be using some of that money if we're successful on that grant. Next slide. And then these are the other, the remaining projects during, for the capital. The first one there, the parking, parking lot upgrades was not approved. That won't move forward, but the rest will. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Member Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Underhill. Could you walk me through a little bit more on the park, how, how the park ranger is going to be utilized, what the, what the hours will be, what, how they're, what, what they're going to be engaging with at the parks? How that, how that, how that works out? It's a full-time job, I understand. How does that work out to, what are they doing with their time? I'm just trying to understand this position a little bit better.
Yeah, excellent. Good question. So we've been talking about that. Our goal is not to have a consistent schedule with them. They will be 40 hours a week, but as we know that people behave when they know our rangers, their code officers there and what, they get used to those hours. So the goal would be to have kind of a rotational schedule where they're working seven days a week, having random days off. And their goal would be to not only deal with the off-leash dog enforcement and wherever that program ends up, but also just deal with issues that we have in our parks. It's not consistent. We know we have issues with drug use and homelessness and challenges with vandalism and different things. We're hoping the park ranger in their rounds to all the parks can address that. We had a recent, I'm having a recent issue with all the gyms having classes being canceled. They're holding some of their classes in our parks and not charging, we're not charging them for the park usage because we don't know about it. But that's, we found out, we're charging them now. But ultimately, the ranger will be addressing those sort of issues as we get complaints. They'll, they'll be called out to those if they're on duty. But again, it's just one position for this year. We hope to grow the, the program in the future to have full seven day a week coverage from opening to close.
Now, will the, the park ranger have the, the authority to write tickets and all of that, like as a code enforcement officer would?
That would be the goal is they would act as a code enforcement officer and have that training to be able to cite individuals that are not following park rules or regulations.
Okay. And then how would this, where this is in the, the parks and rec budget, would they coordinate with code enforcement at all? It seems like there's some overlap there. How is that relationship going to work?
They're going to have to definitely work together. The ranger will be reporting to our open space manager who oversees our parks. But they're going to have to coordinate with Dave Lewis and his team to ensure coverage and schedules and all of that and make sure that we have everything we need to be addressed when the ranger's on duty or not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Percham Siro.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Underhill. I have two questions. One is, I was kind of surprised to not see this item. I know that we had discussed it in the past, but the redesign of the parks in anticipation of the bond measure that potentially is coming up in, what is it, 2023 or so, or the, or the expiration of the current general obligation that includes Pirates Cove. But just regarding the, the redesign, is there a reason for that not being on the list?
We do have the funding in our open space capital that could be used for next year. I don't believe all 400 will be needed for the park design right off the bat, but the funding is there if, if we choose to move forward with design next year, bonding does look like it's an option.
Okay, perfect. And then second question I have is regarding the revenues, I guess I may, I should have probably asked it at the very beginning of the meeting, but when, when coming up with the parks and rec revenues for 2021, are we assuming that everything goes back to normal January 1st? Or how do we come up with that, with those projections?
Yeah, I wish there was a more educated way to do this, but with COVID, it's starting to wrench into how we do projections. I don't know what next year is going to look like. I'm not sure when COVID is going to end and when everything is going to go back to what normal was at one point. And so we did reduce the revenue projections for next year in anticipation of COVID still being around. But we also looked at as, you know, vaccines coming out, hopefully we're back to what normal used to be and bringing in revenue like we once were. But I anticipate there'll be some changes. There will be people that will cancel their memberships and not come back. We don't want that. But that's where we mentioned kind of relevancy and virtual, virtual reaching out to our, our members and patrons and trying to stay connected so they stick with us through these harder times.
And I guess, so I may, this may be a council request, or if you have this information handy, but do you know when the majority of our revenue comes in for Parks and Rec? Is it more of a summer activity because of Pirates Cove and the golf course? Is it because of the, the rec center? Is it, you know, does it fluctuate across the, the entire year? Just trying to get an idea of that.
Yeah, we see, yeah, we see a larger increase in revenue in the spring and summertime, especially with Pirates Cove being open. That's when we make the majority of our revenue. I think we were supposed to bring in like 1.6 million through Pirates Cove without COVID in the mix. And so that's about half of the projected revenue right there.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city council member Stone.
Thank you. So I was wondering why you decided to propose one park ranger as opposed to more than that, since the analysis that you had given to me in my council member request indicated that in order for us to cover off-leash hours and some of the non-off-leash hours fully across our parks, it would require at least three.
That is correct. I did give you that analysis. We're trying to be cognizant of where the budget stands as a city as a whole and looking to start this, not necessarily as a pilot program, but that's kind of what I would see the first year being figuring out, you know, is three really what we need? Do we only need two? Can we cover it? How will code enforcement work with this ranger and, and cover those hours until we have full staff on the ranger program? So again, it really came down to the city budget, knowing our deficits going into next year and trying to be cognizant of that as a whole.
So I'm, I'm concerned about having a one-person department brand new on their own without any, you know, support except for from outside of their own department. And I want to make sure that if we're going to launch a new program, that we set it up for success. So I person, personally am interested in finding ways to have more than one park ranger so that we can ensure that it's a successful program that has a positive impact on our community and, and we can really see what it's going to do when it's at least somewhat staffed up as needed. Because frankly, I, I think that we're understaffed in code enforcement right now as well. And to ask for code enforcement to also assist in essentially creating a new department and helping them out, sounds like it's actually adding almost maybe more, at least to the code enforcement supervisor. And it, I, I think that it would be a good idea for us to have more than one park ranger, even as a pilot program to ensure that it's successful.
I appreciate your comment. And, you know, we can look into that. I'll work with City Manager Lewis and Director Sabata to see how that might look if we can add that in. We do have options potentially next year, and we're still researching it for a licensing program and all that. So there may be some revenue too, to help offset that. It's just, there's unknowns right now, since we're not fully in it just yet.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Manager Lewis, you look like you'd like to add. No? All right. Good to see you. I don't see any further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so actually, City Manager Lewis is going to talk about the communications department.
Of course, that's why you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Sabata. I am pitch hitting tonight for Chris Hargit, who is somewhere in Minnesota on vacation with his family. So in the communications department, the main increase is a personnel staffing addition, as well as some changes in the compensate, from the compensation study. First of all, in terms of the priorities, you already know about many of these. So I won't go into those. I think you're about as familiar at these, with these priorities as any. But as you know, we will be having a presentation from Director Hargit in an upcoming council meeting. It's on a future study session. Next slide. So this is the, well, let's see. So the main change here is that we have transferred the neighborhood resources coordinator into communications. And then the other one is this communication and marketing specialist, which I'll mention in the next slide. So that, the neighborhood resources program is an additional $50,000. That's the program dollars that are used to fund things like the neighborhood groups and the happy hours that have been doing, been held. We're probably going to use most of that money this year by buying equipment that can be used in future years. But, but we think that that's still a good amount to fund that program. We also, as you know, had money in the 2020 budget for the Granicus web redesign, but Granicus has told us that they can't finish that project all in 2020. So we are asking for some additional dollars in 2021. And that's just a byproduct to the fact that we can't carry over money from year to year, even for ongoing projects that aren't yet complete. We did have in the compensation study survey results, we had, I think, three people in that department that were actually under the minimum. We also made one change as a result of the reorganization of the city manager's office in that move into communications. And so that is representative there. That 13,000 does represent those two changes. And then also an additional $1,000 in employee education and professional development services. And these are the capital projects, as you know, you recommended, along with the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission, $90,000 for wayfinding and place making in 2021. That website that we thought was going to be $40,000 out of the CIP, it actually be taken out because we have been able to find the money in the 2020 budget. And then again, part of that in the 2021 budget. And then we also were able to use some funds that were not spent, spent because of COVID-19 to purchase the block party trailer. You may to purchase the block party trailer. You may remember Madeline Heath was coming to you and describing that asset that we will have for future years that we can deploy a trailer into the neighborhood and it has all the supplies and equipment you need to really have a nice event within your neighborhood. So we think it's really a tool to bring those neighborhoods together. If I could just mention a couple of points about that new position. We do think that through a partnership that's currently being discussed with parks, that we may not have to have this position in 2021, but those details are still being worked out. But they would be responsible for developing, implementing and tracking marketing programs, such as email, social media, digital and print campaigns. As you know, we don't have a full-time webmaster, but by shifting to some of these tasks that our current webmaster, Lucia Magnuson, some of her duties are currently being taken up on the marketing side, and we think that this new position could kind of free her up to focus more completely on the website. Next slide. Which I think is questions and comments. I'll be glad to try to answer.
All right, questions, comments? Looks like we have none.
All right.
Member Russell has one.
Thank you, Mayor. So why did we transfer the neighborhood resources person from your office to communications?
Yeah, that's a good question. One of the main reasons that we did was because when we did away with the, there were really two main reasons. When we did away with the deputy city manager position, I went from having, I believe, six direct reports to what would have been 13 direct reports with the addition of Madeline and the fire marshal. So by moving those two divisions into the police department and the communications department respectively, it really gave me a more manageable group of direct reports that wasn't, for lack of a better term, overwhelming. The second reason that we made that change was because really the city manager's office, while it can be considered a catch-all for a number of divisions and programs and services, really should not be outside of a kind of a kickoff or startup program or service that is council, has an interest in. Once it started, kicked off, initiated, we really feel like it should go out of the city manager's office and into an appropriate department. So there were two departments that I considered for this. One was the community development department, the other was communications. We really felt like that communications, because they focused so much on getting information out to the neighborhoods, that there was a real natural affinity between communications and neighborhood resources and that Madeline's time could also be spent helping the communications department deploy information like they currently are, but more directly to the neighborhoods.
Thank you. And then one other question, that $13,777, is that spread across all the employees in that department or just one or two?
I believe it's three employees and that's a result of that compensation study demonstrating that we are underpaying a couple of those employees. The other one, including the director, I should mention. And the other one is, as part of the reorganization, by moving neighborhood resources into communications, I did do, I think it was a 3% salary adjustment as part of that reorganization.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Wink.
Thanks, Mayor. Manager Lewis, do we really have a webmaster on staff? I wasn't aware we did.
All duties and responsibilities with regard to webmaster fall to Lucia under the direction of the communications director. So we really feel like, Chris felt like that we could actually dedicate Lucia more to webmaster duties if we could pull off some of the marketing and communications tasks that she's currently doing.
Thank you.
All right, looks like we can move on. Thank you. Next one.
Sorry, that took me a minute to come back. I can talk a little bit about the contingency and debt service. So as you know, we do have a contingency budget and you can see the the changes that are included in the budget below. Typically, we have the contingency to pay for leave payouts for employees who are separating from the city. And next year, or the amount is approximately $335,000. It's within the, I believe, it's within the personnel line item, but there were some changes year over year. So the difference is approximately $43,000. You can see the contractual services are also going down. Again, I'm sorry, yes, going down. The reason for that is because this year there have been some items that have been charged, I think related to legal services for negotiations with EPBA and EEA. I could look into that, but it is a reduced budget going forward into 2021. And debt service isn't changing. So that reduction of approximately $85,000 next year in contingency. Right. All right, so that concludes our conversation, you know, regarding primarily the general funds. And I know in the interest of time, there are multiple enterprise funds that we'd like to just give recaps on based on the conversations that we've previously had. And then also included in the deck is a review of the other funds, the sources and uses, and then the ending fund balances. You'll see for the majority of the non-enterprise-related other funds, there aren't significant changes in the revenue or the uses of funds. But if there are particular ones you want to ask questions about, that's fine. But we'll move quickly through this next section because there has been a bit of conversation in the past several months regarding the enterprises.
Director Sabata, I think member Russell has a question.
Okay.
Thank you. This is just a quick question on the contingency. Where it talks about leave payout for employees separating from the city and leave payout of annual leave balances in excess of carryover amount. So why are we allowing employees to, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding this, carry over more than they're allowed to carry over?
Oh, you know what? No, this, so what this was meant to imply, and perhaps it's not worded correctly, is that payout, how do I put this? I have to think about this myself because that's a good question. Okay, so we are in the process of changing the leave balance policies, particularly, you know, in the EEA, in the EPBA contracts as we did. And so there is going to be a period of time that they are offered to have a payout or it can be rolled into, or that amount in excess because we are changing the policy to roll into one of the benefit plans to determine. So based on the selection that they make, and this is a short-term issue, right, for the city, but it's a decision to reduce those balances and because it's a change in the policy, we are offering that option. And I guess I could ask Director Hanger if I've explained that correctly.
Actually, it makes much more sense now that you said we're changing the policy. And so you can't penalize people if you didn't have the policy before.
Correct.
That answers it unless there's more additional information, but thank you very much.
Hey, you ready to move on?
Okay. Next slide.
Kind of go through these last three quickly because we have had a lot of time with these already, but we'll have several other meetings to go over this too.
So I think the main thing I'll point out, the information that was included in your package included the special funds. And you can see the changes in the sources and uses of funds. You know, 2020 versus 2028 and 2021, wow, I'm really fast forwarding. As you can see, the fund balances have not changed significantly in any of the categories, except for the donors' fund. The proposed uses for next year are higher. And we can get you information on that. I don't know if anybody on the phone would like to speak up regarding that particular proposed use of funds, if there's any interest.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, so we'll move forward. Debt service funds, these are, you can see the balances that will remain in the debt service. The sources and uses are approximately the same year over year, so no issues there. Okay. Internal service funds, you know, obviously Maria had an opportunity to talk about the service center fund and the capital equipment replacement fund. The risk management fund and the employee benefit funds. You know, again, when we come forth with the proposed draft, you'll see more detail regarding these particular budgets. So I won't spend a lot of time now because obviously the number specifically, the employee benefit fund could change depending upon where we land with the benefit negotiation. Next slide. And the enterprise funds. All right, so these are the ones, these are the funds that we have had some discussion on, a lot of discussion on over the past year. So we'll just move forward and we could talk about each one of these. So with that, Director Van Rye, would you like to start with the water fund?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll go quickly through these because we've met on them several times through the course of the summer. I'll be back actually on the 24th, I believe, to also talk through more of the finalization, the rate and fee study. It'll be our third, third time going through this. So essentially what you can see here is what we've been talking about all spring and summer, which is an increase in investment in the water fund that comes from drawing down the fund balance. The major things I'd like to highlight is the personnel, which goes up by 1.5 million. That includes increases, compensation study, as well as the eight additional FTEs that I've proposed throughout the course of the rate and fee study. The other additional, oh, sorry, the other significant increases in capital expenditures, that's based on the master plan and what we've talked about in terms of investing that, investing that fund balance into capital, the needed capital improvements. Okay, next slide. These are generally all the things we've been talking about, stuff I just covered. Next slide, please. These are the positions I talked about. These are all things that we covered, a couple or three positions in engineering and five positions in operations and maintenance, largely to help us with maintenance, building up a maintenance program as well as staffing the water plant so we're not so thinly staffed with operators so that we can get appropriate coverage. Next slide, please. These are some of the programs that we've talked about along the way. So hydraulic modeling, lead service line replacement and lagoon dredging is one that we've recently added, and that's because our lagoons fill up with solids and our onsite dredging equipment over time can't keep up. And so we want to, we want to take some time to knock down the amount of solids that are in the, in the lagoons. Next slide, please. So these are the main things that we've talked about in terms of how to accomplish this. So the proposal would be a 4% rate increase as well as that capital investment fee for water that we talked about at $15. And then the, on the connection fee side, a new water resources connection fee of $17,504. And then a resulting reduction in the water system connection fee of $2,888. Next slide, please. These are the capital projects. These are all things you've seen multiple times before. Next slide. Finish that out for a total capital expenditure of $7 million in 2021. Think that might be the fastest I've gone through the water fund this summer.
Congratulations.
Why, thank you.
Any questions for him? All right, looks like we move on.
Okay, sewer fund, very similar. Same kind of thing here, our budgets. Our staffing personnel budget actually doesn't go up that much. The main increase in budget here is on capital expenditures and a lot of that's tied to South Platte Renew. You can see the total budget goes from 22 million to 24 million. And keeping in mind that a large part of that is funding the Englewood's portion of South Platte Renew. Next slide, please. These are all the things we've been talking about all summer, with the last one being adequately fun South Platte Renew. Next slide. Less in the staffing, less staffing addition here because of the proportionate share of engineering positions. Several of those positions were specifically related to water, same with the operations division. So these are the engineering and operations proportionate shares that would charge the sewer fund. You can see it's pretty low. These are the programs that we've talked about sewer pipe cleaning and flushing. CCTV is the important thing. That's the one where once we get an understanding of what our systems look like, then we can really start to prioritize and rehab the sewer collection system. Next slide, please. This is the rate and fee increases that we're proposing. So we propose a sewer rate increase of four and a half percent, similar to what we've talked about this summer. The sewer collection fee, sewer collection connection fee actually decreases from 1,200 to 401, so it's a decrease of 799. However, the sewer treatment connection fee increases from 1,400 to 1,969, and that's based on those methodologies that we talked about in late July. These are the capital proportion investments from the sewer enterprise fund itself. You can see, these are things that we've talked about. Next slide, please. And any questions or comments?
Council, any questions? Don't see any, so go ahead.
Okay, South Platte Renew. So this will be a recap of everything that we talked about at the joint councils meeting. You can see the budget went up about $600,000 from 28 million to just over 29 million. We had some increase in personnel, some increase in capital expenditures and some decrease in contractual services and commodities. Next slide. These are the priorities and initiatives that we've discussed. The, one of the most significant being the Reg 85 requirements that are getting closer and closer. So we're actually at that point in time where we're starting to build that infrastructure to meet those requirements. Next slide. These are the results of the compensation study as well as what we talked about. South Platte Renew currently has an allocated FTE amount of 88.75 FTEs. And I've been working with that number for the past couple of years and believe that actual position reduction makes sense for South Platte Renew to down to 86 FTEs. I think that's about the right amount of people. So we'll propose a reduction in FTEs. Next slide, please. Rate and fees obviously is addressed through Englewood and Littleton's sewer enterprise funds. Next slide. These are capital investments for next year, which is in line with what we've been talking about over the past couple of years. Next slide. And any questions or comments?
Nice work. Any questions? Comments, things that you're going to need in the future? Great. All right, we'll go on to the last one, I believe, right?
So Director Deandre, you're up.
All right. Again, as we've gone over this many times in the past, so you can see the significant increase from 2020 to 2021, primarily in those capital expenses. So we, earlier this year, we laid out the stormwater master plan and the results of that. And that's directly reflected in those capital expense dollars. They match what you've seen before. Thank you. And we're focused on cleaning our programs and projects. So our programs are really cleaning and televising those larger diameter storm sewers, what we would consider 36 inches in diameter and above, collecting data to feed back into their GIS system, repairing and rehabilitating our existing pipes, installing rain gauges. We have a better idea of the water and stormwater that we're actually seeing within the community. And finally, designing and constructing capital projects. Our plan stormwater rate increase is to go from a quarterly bill of $20.13 to $30.81 or a $10.68 increase per quarter. And our projects that we're focused on, that ties back to that other number, you can see there is $14.7 million. We're focused on the project S1 and S2, which would run from Rotolo Park out to We're focused on the Project S1 and S2, which would run from Rotolo Park out to the South Platte River to the west. Project S3A, which is in generally the Broadway and Akoma area. We will be coming back to you on August 17th to talk in more detail about that. Then the Hospital Project, which runs parallel along Old Hampton Avenue in front of Swedish Hospital all the way to Lincoln Street. Finally, we've allocated some dollars for repairing and rehabilitating those existing pipes and cleaning our large diameter pipe. With that, I'd stand for any questions.
Member Russell has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. So Director DeAndrea, have we lowered the amount expected to be spent on S1 and S2?
Good question, yeah. If you could go back, thank you Jenny. The, this is shows just the $20.21 that we're estimating. So we know that that, those, those two projects will likely span 2021 and 2022. So this is just the 2021 portion.
So can I ask you a question? Is it possible that this is something we could revisit? I mean, in looking at all the pipes being cleaned out, it's possible that we may not need to go to the extent that we originally planned. Is that possible or are we just moving forward with that?
Sure, thanks for bringing that up. So the assumptions that went into, that go into all of our studies is that the pipes are clean, that they're not filled with debris. So when we talk about having to expand the capacity, they, they really start from the presumption that the pipes are clean. So to your question, yes, we do still need to, in locations, increase the capacity. And now, you know, the caliber study was kind of at that 30,000 foot level. Now we're getting down more into the nitty gritty and the very specific locations. And again, you'll see that next Monday with, when we come back to present to you. But we're really, we, we have that conservative dollar amount and we're taking it down. But yes, we do need to increase pipes and locations.
And, and I also understand that there are places where there's broken pipes that they need to be fixed, that is also creating a problem for us, or bottlenecks, right?
Yes, there's areas where, yeah, they're, they go from a larger pipe, for whatever reason, to a smaller pipe and then back to a larger pipe. So again, just from a capacity standpoint, it makes sense to replace that smaller pipe to connect to those two larger ones.
Right, and so I'm just suggesting that perhaps we do those fixes and then reevaluate. And maybe you can just explain it better when we get farther down the road.
Yeah, and I think you will see that as we show more of the detailed engineering analysis that we've done.
Okay, thank you very much, Director DeAndrea.
Yep, thank you.
All right, any further questions? Looks like we're ready to go on.
So our Concrete Utility Fund, as you've probably heard me talk about, we've become a little bit more assertive in making sure that we're not only replacing pedestrian ramps, but also being more assertive in, in going zone by zone to remove trip hazards and replace broken and damaged concrete pavement sections, or excuse me, concrete sidewalk sections. So you can see the reflection there, the personnel costs have gone down slightly. This is just staff changes within public work staffing that is now allocated within the Engineering and Inspections Group versus being assigned to the Concrete Utility Fund. But the capital expenses is where you're seeing an increase where we anticipate our contract services going up for next year to expend more money to repair more segments. Again, we're focused on those damaged sidewalks and curb and gutter. And we are proposing a Concrete Utility Rate Increase of, right now it's about just over 12 cents per square foot. And we're proposing that that would go up to 16 cents per square foot or about a three and three quarter cent increase, which would generate about $265,000. And you can see here, the expenditures that we're planning focused again primarily on sidewalk, but also about 175,000 focused on curb and gutter repair. And I'll stand for any questions.
Great, Council, any questions? Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. One question that I have is because I, I did get a call this week about making sure that the public is notified when we have contractors out working in the city. Because people are beginning to think that the city doesn't care about them because they don't tell them ahead of time there's work being done. Are we going to address that also?
Certainly, yes. So our typical communications plan for any project, including our sidewalk repair and our sidewalk grinding, is to send a letter or a postcard in advance from the city notifying that this work is coming up. Typically, we try and do that at least a couple of weeks ahead of time and then provide Council with a copy of that in Manager Lewis's Friday Update. Then right before, within 24 to 48 hours before the contractor starts at a particular location, the intent is to put a notice on the doorknob or somehow attach it to the front door so that they're aware that we're working right in front of their house or immediately within the block or so. So I know that our concrete provider did not do that recently for a few instances and we had talked to them about that.
I greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Looks like we're ready to move on. Thank you, Director DeAndrea.
Okay, so thank you, everyone, for the conversation and the Directors and Jennifer Nolan for her work on this presentation. At this point, you know, this really is the time for the Council to discuss the recommendations that staff has put forth for expenditures and to provide us with some guidance as we move forward in preparing the draft of the proposed 2021 budget.
All right. Member Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Sotomayor, might, might you have an estimate for one day of furlough by now?
So Jenny and I have been emailing back and forth. And, you know, she's been driving the slides, so it was challenging for her to look up that information. But if it would be okay with Council, I would like to make this a Council request and we will get back to you hopefully this week. Put it in the package this week. I know it's something that she has calculated in the past. The one thing that I will caution is that for, for our operations that run 24/7, there, there could be an issue with additional costs related to overtime if, if there is a decision to furlough certain employees. So I just want to bring that up because there might not be the savings that, that you might expect. So if it's okay, may I ask that this become a Council request?
It's more than okay and I can enter that request online. Thank you, Director Sotomayor, appreciate it.
Thank you. Other comments, feedback? Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. I would like to go back to the Park Ranger discussion because I, I have a totally different take than Councilmember Stone. I really would like for us to get more information from the Code Enforcement Department. What, let's see. I would like to know what the plan of the Code Enforcement Department of how they prioritize their time and resources to ascertain if we really need a Park Ranger. I think that we need more information from Code Enforcement rather than just assuming that they have way too much work. So I'd like more data on that before we make a decision on that one.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on Councilmember Russell's request actually and find out how many, if, if we know roughly how many Code Enforcement Officers other cities around us have. And maybe a breakdown of per residence, per population, something along those lines as well. Because I gotta be honest, I feel like our Code Enforcement Department is relatively small and that it could stand to be potentially increased along with adding the Park Rangers Department as well. I just don't see how four people and a supervisor can cover all of the code and the parks and the green spaces and everything else that they're supposed to cover in a city like ours. Because we do have a lot of parks and we do have a lot of alleyways. I'm also interested in a little bit more on corresponders, increasing corresponders, finding out exactly what our contract with Denver Fire says about paramedics. I know that you were already looking into that for me, Director. So, you know, I know that you're, you're getting that to us pretty soon here anyways. And what it would look like to increase those programs and divert calls away from the Police Department and what kind of cost savings that might create. Seeing as how, you know, we've, we've received information stating that about 20% of calls could likely be handled by this, this other public safety and health sort of coresponder unit. Those are my big requests.
Any other feedback or questions? Council, we're going to come back on the 24th, but we need to give them direction. And what more do you need to help make decisions here? Go ahead, Members Russell, and then I'll come back to you, Member Stone.
Thank you. Member Russell, you're muted.
Okay, sorry. One thing that I noticed that staff didn't address at all really is cutting spending, although I do believe that you all have worked to keep expenses down a lot. I do appreciate Councilmember Wink's question. I think that would be helpful to us. But, and I don't know if this is something that staff can do. Is it possible for us to know already the fee increases that are in place for water, for sewer, for storm water? And anything else that already is in the works that we cannot change? To find out what the average homeowner is already going to pay in fee increases from the previous year? I mean, I know that we have raised water rates, I think it was water, 7%, two times. Was that water or was that sewer?
It was sewer.
Okay, so, so there is those in addition to what we're suggesting.
Right.
Thank you.
Great, I, could, could I add to that? If we did go with single hauling trash and then we have some average of what we think it's going to cost, what that kind of savings could be as well. And then Councilmember Stone, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. I forgot that I had wanted to ask the Chief actually if there was any additional costs involved with specifically traffic tasked officers. If, if there's any additional equipment that would be necessary in order to have more of our police officers tasked to traffic calming specifically and in that, that unit that currently only has three officers. And I just, I forgot to, to ask him if he knew that.
Chief, if you know now, I suppose you could answer, otherwise we could make it a Council request.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the only thing would be, would be to increase their number. And it would have to come from somewhere. And I'm not quite sure where that would come from right now. I, I would try to take it from patrol and the other units are at minimum right now. So, yeah, I, I would say adding another officer to that unit would be difficult.
Would there be any material costs associated with that? Like, would we need to purchase like additional equipment, radar guns, what have you?
No, I, I think we have plenty there. I don't think, I don't think we'd have to buy any new vehicles or anything like that. It's just a transfer of one person to a different assignment.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it, Chief.
Sure.
Other comments or questions from Council? I would also like to see, I would like to see if, if every department or if Manager Lewis you looked through, if there were a certain percentage of these we just did not do this year, which ones could be delayed for another year. I'm, I'm not interested in delaying huge infrastructure. I think we've done that way too much in the city of Englewood and, but are there some things where, well, okay, we can wait another year to do that and see what happens with the economy? We're in such a precarious time. I don't know if others would agree with that on Council. I don't want to put him through a lot of work without the rest of you agreeing with that. Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, are you talking about the FTEs or general?
All of it, any of it. And if it ends up in FTEs, yeah.
I'm, I guess I'm sitting here going, well, I could, I could go through and we got, we got to cut this down somehow on the expensive side. And I could go through and start naming, you know, listing things off, but I don't feel like I have, you know, the, 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 you know, my, the knowledge of the internal workings to really know what are the, what are the least bad things to cut at this point, you know? But if we're, I think it was 3.5 million high on our expenses for, for the revenues, we got to cut, cut somewhere. So I, I would love to, to see if we could get some more information from the departments on what, what can, what can be delayed. I mean, the things that jump out at me are the, a couple of the tracking systems that are pretty high dollar items, you know? Could, we've lived without those for a while, can we make it another year? I understand they would be great things to have, but we got to bring this down, bring this down some. So I'd like to, I'd like to see what, what we could, what we could do along the lines of what Mayoral's suggesting to just go through it all and see what can we take off the top.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me know, I've been having issues with the wifi, so I'm going to keep my video off for now. But let me know if I start cutting in and out. I guess the way that I'm looking at this is that if we're going to be using the unassigned fund balance, I, I have an issue using operational and FTEs for that because not only is it going to increase our costs this year, but it's going to increase our costs next year and the year after. And when we saw the memo at the beginning, obviously the medical expenses and then the increases in some of the contracts are really playing a role in why we are seeing a deficit. So that to me is an issue. So I would like to look at the FTEs first and see if we can minimize that. Obviously, capital, that, that's, that's long term. And I would prefer to keep that in place as much as we can, obviously, since we're off by several million. I don't think that that's going to be possible, but I, I prefer to look at the FTEs first just because that's going to be a year over year, unless we decide to cut it next year, which I don't think is best in the long-term pursuit of the city. So that's just my, my take on, on what I'm seeing.
Thank you, Member Russell.
Thank you. I would agree with, with Mayor Protem Sierra in the fact that it is not wise to use the unassigned fund balance to fund ongoing costs and actually things that will increase our costs. And I think at some point, although it's really difficult to know, we've got to cut back because it just keeps snowballing every year. So I would agree with Mayor Protem Sierra on looking at FTEs. Thank you.
Great. Member Stone?
So I definitely understand the reticence to fund ongoing programs with funds that aren't coming in this year per se. But that's kind of been what City Council has done for quite some time, and that's how we ended up with such a large reserve. So I'm interested in seeing how we can use some of those funds, which our budget advisory committee has suggested we use in order to better serve our community and to institute programs that might actually end up saving us money in the long run anyways in other areas. So if we have to dip into that unassigned fund balance to get some of these programs off the ground, I think that's kind of exactly what it's for at this point, is to help us launch programs that may end up saving us money in other areas, probably will end up saving us money in other areas.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Member Stone, for your comment. I have no problem using the unassigned fund balance, but I, you know, me specifically, I would love to see something done with Cushing Park. And that's, that I have no problem putting money towards. But I think just in terms of just additional headcount, I think that that's where I have an issue. I had to dig into a lot of this information again and just see if there's anything else that I can suggest. I'll probably meet with the city manager, but I know we have a lot of tough decisions to make in terms of where to cut and what to keep. So I'll make sure to do some of that research.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the suggestions from the Budget Advisory Committee on the unassigned fund balance were good, especially using it on capital projects. I don't have the same hesitation that the VAC had on using those funds for 10% transfers and loans to the enterprise funds either. But I do think that those are the best place, those are the places that have been underfunded, the capital improvement projects and the enterprise funds and all the capital needs there for so long that we really do need to, I think, transfer that money to some other fund that's specifically assigned for, you know, maybe create a new fund for the enterprise funds and transfer some to the capital projects fund or something like that. But I absolutely share the hesitation of funding year-over-year programs and FTEs with the unassigned fund balance. But that being said, we do, we do, you know, we do need to, I think, take the Budget Advisory Committee suggestion seriously to start spending that money. And I think capital projects is the place to do that. So I'd like to talk, talk more about that. Maybe this isn't the time, but I do share Mayor Protem's hesitation on spending those, those money on FTEs.
Yeah, thanks. It sounds like we have a consensus then. In the past, we have not tried to use the reserves for ongoing, what's going to increase budget over time for positions. That's why I asked Director Brocklander about, about some of the IT things. Those are purchases, but some of them are maintenance things that you get into because of the purchases as well. Maybe, so I think hopefully all of us have been using the sheet of the department, the program and initiative requests and then keep or defer. And I'm wondering, Manager Lewis, if we could rate all of the increases by, is this going to be an ongoing or a one-time? I mean, I guess I could, we can all do it ourselves, but if there's somebody who could go through it quickly and do that, I mean, an FTE is something over time that just continues. The other ones, but IT stuff is also expensive and then you have to maintain it every year with certain kinds of programs with it. But that would help me in giving more feedback on how to keep and defer. I think the mistake we've made in the past, and this somewhat, Member Stone, is to answer your, the point you raised, is that we haven't spent our reserves when we should have on improvements. That it's, that's where we haven't been. And it's, it's a holdover because we've had so many people, not so many, but a good, strong voice saying, you know, we're bleeding, we're bleeding, we're in a deficit. Yet we had these huge reserves and we were not using them well because we were all, I don't know, I think we got really blind on how to really do our budgeting better. So I appreciate the work that our finance departments have done in really putting this forward and helping us understand it all. The other question I would have is, Manager Lewis, is where are there places we can increase revenue? And I think you all have been thinking about those as well, and it would be nice to hear if there are some, some things there. Where do we, we're increasing some in the areas of fees, obviously. But what other things might be happening that we could consider? I mean, you mentioned some, there were some in the, in the report tonight, too, I think, right? So that would be helpful. Any further?
Something you need to respond to?
Oh, sure, if you'd like to. If it jogged something in your head.
Well, I think there are a couple of things. For the majority of the expenditures that comprise the 3.4 million, which I've mentioned earlier, the salary increases, the benefits, right? They are one-time for this year. However, they become part of your base budget and it compounds, right? The FTEs are certainly, the decisions that you make will impact multiple years going forward. That's, that's a fact. I think for the most part, you know, those, oh, and your medical benefits, of course, right? We also are in an agreement right now. And I think we are being extremely in the negotiations, there aren't negotiations really. We went back to Kaiser. We had said, given the level of service we've received, we'd like to have the increase be less than 8%. I don't know how successful we'll be, but we're trying. So I think there are very few asks in the budget that are one-time, to be perfectly honest. I don't, I don't have the list in front of me, but I think if we brought that together, it might be 200,000 to 300,000 of that gap. So I wanted to say that. And then also, I want to be clear that all of the rate increases we've been talking about are specific to the enterprises and support-specific projects. So they won't help us with this general fund gap that we have. And I also would like to say that the capital as well, it's a different source of revenue. It's in a different fund. So those are two separate, actually, three separate conversations, to be honest, as it relates to, you know, filling this gap. I think the, the choices that we have are used part of the unassigned fund balance. We could talk about other sources of revenue as it relates to other rate and fee increases that haven't been discussed here tonight that could help the general fund, which I don't know if that is really reasonable. We would have put those recommendations forth, I think, quite frankly, to offset some of this. The other revenue source could be perhaps increasing some of the, well, the property tax, but that's a capital. So, you know, it's very difficult, right? Because these are all needs that we've put forth to maintain our levels of service and increase them to the expectation. I think we're just in a tough situation with, with coming off of COVID, quite frankly, and we can't, we can't, we aren't projecting that we can see those increases in the sales taxes that, that we have had in the past. I don't know that we can rely on that. And then, of course, we've got risk already in our parks and rec revenue. So it's a challenging combination. I, I wanted to make sure that we clarified kind of the different things that we've put forth in the budget because they do impact different buckets of money.
Yeah.
And I probably didn't answer our question, but it was more for clarification purposes.
Getting sort of a quick sort of response of, yeah, it's probably not a lot of one timers. I mean, yeah. But anything you can do to give us some further guidance on any of these as we think keep or defer? I, and I think maybe it was Member Stone raised, you know, is it going to save money? Well, something we do now save money the next year. Will it have some? Can we predict that or not? I'm not sure that we can predict on some of these things that, that we actually will see a revenue decrease. But if we know something really does tend to do that, then that would be helpful to know, too. Yeah. All right. Anything else, Council? Well, I wish it wasn't COVID, right?
Makes it challenging. So I guess I will ask the city manager if you have closing comments before talking about next steps. I mean, we will be back now on the 24th, but just based on what direction the council has provided, do you have a suggestion as to how we may look at the next couple of weeks as a team to get together and talk about what was discussed tonight in preparation for the next discussion on August 24th?
Just to say that I think we've got, I've got the notes, I'm sure you do too, of what council wants. More information on what some priorities are of individual council members. So I think I've got enough to work with you and the budget staff to really start making some of these adjustments, but mostly on the expenditure side, but also, as the mayor mentioned, you know, possibly some revenue ideas as well. Yeah, to move forward. I think we're ready to go to next steps.
All right. So again, we will have, if you could go back, Jenny? Thank you. So on August 24th, we will come forth with some follow-ups to the questions that were asked tonight for their discussion in preparation of preparing the final proposed 2021 budget that will be available online by September 8th in advance of the public hearing that is currently scheduled for September 14th. There will be another conversation after the public hearing to finalize the budget and with the expectation of bringing forth a final, final for the first reading and second readings in early October, well in advance of of the required time to, to submit a finalized budget prior to the end of the year. You know, I would hope that, you know, maybe if, if things lighten up with COVID, we might be able to increase the revenues and talk about those over the next several weeks and bring forth some other considerations as well. But this is the timeline that we're working towards finalizing this budget. All right. I think that's it. I think the next just talks about the calendar, right, Jenny? Just in total, kind of where this and, yeah. So our next step is to meet on the 24th.
All right. Thank you very much, Director Savada. Appreciate it. Have a safe trip home.
Thank you.
Our next item is COVID-19 update, and I'm going to suggest that maybe we rearrange our agenda, but here maybe not do it unless there's something really pressing that you want to tell us, Manager Lewis, or if there's a question that's burning in somebody tonight to get an answer to. Otherwise, I think Manager Lewis was suggesting we might do this in another week.
Glad to answer any questions that Council may have.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions you want him to answer right now? You've done such a great job of giving us updates every week, too. If there's anything really important for us to know, it'd be good to know in that written form as well. Great. And then the next agenda item is reports from boards and commissions. I'm going to suggest that we do that next week as well. We've gone a little longer than we were anticipating tonight. That's okay. I know there's a couple of boards and commissions that meet next week anywhere, this week yet still, so then there'll be a little bit more for that. So that, then will be Agenda Item 5, which is Council, Councilmember's Choice. So why don't we go through folks and if you have anything you feel important to tell us tonight or the public? Why don't we begin? And I'll start with Member Anderson, if you don't mind. Just going to go through it alphabetically.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to the library for all of the, the adaptation that they've done with COVID and it's just, I've been really impressed with the delivery or bringing out people's materials to the front or to the back there and coming up with resources, the online programming, just lots of stuff going on. I know that they're working on some resources for people who are new to homeschooling. There's a lot of, a lot of those kind of folks out there. So there's just some great stuff going on. I really appreciate all the resources the libraries providing for the community. So go library. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have is I would just like to thank staff for all the hard work that they've been doing on the budget and looking at this. It's, it's been a very difficult year and, and I do appreciate their hard work, other than that I have nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Sierra?
Mayor, you anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm cutting out badly, so I'll keep it quick. I too wanted to thank staff for all the work they've done on the budget. I guess I do have one request. This may be a council request, but I'd like to understand the later fund. And I think the two years that I've been on council, I don't think that we've really discussed when we're going to use it. So I'd like to get an understanding of the definitions that previous councils used to understand, to state when we would use the 4 million plus that's currently in there, I believe. So just definitions and uses, and then I would like this council to make a decision on what would constitute a use in the future.
Great, thank you. I don't think any of us would disagree. Good. All right. Any council, do you see us, anybody disagree with that? Go ahead, because I know that's going to take a little time, but we'll put it on the agenda, too, with some information. All right, Councilmember Stone?
The thing that I wanted to bring up is already going to be talked about in a few minutes anyways.
All right. And Councilmember Wink?
Same as Member Stone. Thank you.
And I guess last is me. I had something. And I can't remember what it is, so it must not be that important. All right. So we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is the city manager's choice. And he's also bringing up the discussion with council on feedback on the police reform outline that, that the PDF was submitted. So Manager Lewis, go ahead and lead us through this.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just point your attention toward the memo that was at the end of this council communication. And that was from our command staff, really just outlining what the proposed purpose could be of a task force, which we believe was the direction that we were given to give you all some options. So what we came up with was researching best practice alternatives to the police department's response models on a variety of issues, mental health, homelessness, alcohol, drug addiction, other criminal call-in services. And then also just suggesting other action items that could arise from those discussions, that, you know, training has been discussed, expansion of the coresponder program, you know, new programs such as the Kahoots program and that type of system, plus, you know, expansion of the impact team. So we really think that that, that the, the task force could, could use that as its goal and purpose. And the outcome would really be to develop a set of recommendations that would come back to council. The police department set a pretty aggressive timeframe. I had a few things to say about that, too. I should not blame that all on them. But that if we could get that created, that the draft recommendations could, should come back pretty quickly within about a month. And then meet with council to review those shortly thereafter and really try to finalize the recommendations by September 30th. So we would foresee this being a series of pretty intense sessions with this small group. As far as membership, based on the discussion that you all had, we heard something like two council members, a couple of police command staff, a couple of officers, some stakeholders from the community, or rather from our partners, such as All Health Swedish, Change the Trend, and then three residents who would also be on that as well. So frankly, putting it together would probably be our biggest time, take the most time. And so, but we could move pretty quickly to do that. And then you can just see there, the rest of the memos, some alternatives that could be discussed. I've already touched on a few of those. Some of those have actually come up tonight. And then last but not least, you all said you would really be interested in us taking a survey to our police department. So Command Staff has been thinking through what some of those questions would be. So the outcomes really would just be to get that feedback from frontline staff. It could also help reveal other issues or alternatives that we haven't even talked about yet, which I think would be your goal. So we can actually believe we can get that done within the next week or two, that we, we would have results back by the time that the task force could potentially start. So I'll be glad to answer. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. We've also got Chief Collins, as well as other police on command staff on the call, and we're glad to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start. I don't normally do this. I go to the end. I I I love this. I want to suggest that we move forward with this great outline in that while I would love to serve on it, I I think I'm overtaxed with things. I'd love to ask Councilmember Wink and Councilmember Stone if they'd be the two council members that would sit on this. Some others might want to do it as well. I don't know. But anyway, that's my start to this all. So Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would love to serve on this task force, and I would like to ask either the city manager, Lewis, or a member of the police leadership team, if you've already identified some existing sources, some existing what do you call survey instruments that can be used. Obviously, you don't want to recreate the wheel. I love this aggressive deadline or timeframe and milestone developments you've put together here. I I love all of it. Love this handout, as just was mentioned by Mayor Olson. Just wondered if if you have a few ideas that may cover the sort of constructs you're looking for for the survey of our police team. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, Chief, do you mind taking that one?
In fact, I spoke to Sam Watson, and I'm the only police guy up this time of night.
The women and men on the street.
I know. Vance and Sam told me that Hargit would be helping us put that survey together. And 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 quite frankly, I I would ask for your help. We can come up with questions. But I I'd be a little bit more transparent. I would like some questions for the patrol guys to come from you folks. Because otherwise, folks will say, oh, Colin orchestrated the questions. But if you have some questions, we probably would appreciate them sooner rather than later. Because somebody gave me a deadline of next Monday. That's pretty aggressive.
I saw that, and if by the end it's agreed that myself and Member Stone or whomever else will serve on the task force, I certainly already have some that that come from existing measurement instruments, again, that are based on some theoretical constructs, so that I feel are applicable to where we are and what we're questioning, what we're what we're looking at and asking about. So I'll certainly frame it properly and share it if everyone agrees to that. Thank you, Chief Collins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you so much. And I also would be very honored and enthusiastic to serve on this with Member Wink and the chief. And I also am very impressed. I think this might be the closest to just extracting my ideas from my brain and putting on paper that staff has come. So that's pretty exciting to me. I think this is absolutely wonderful. And if we could have that, I know it's probably asking a bit much of the chief and command staff to have a survey turn around that quick. But but I also can, I have some questions that I would like to contribute as well. Member Wink is the the quantitative researcher. I'm a little bit more of the qualitative researcher. But I think that that'll be a good compliment on that as well, to to have both sides of the kind of research coin going there. And I I really like the rapidity of the timeline. I think that's a huge boon to this entire enterprise and really will show that, you know, we're here to get something done. And and I I appreciate the chief's support and willingness of this and and the command staff's support and willingness to engage in this with us. It means a lot to me, and I think it just continuously, you know, is a credit to your character and the character of your department.
Thank you. Give those questions to us right away.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for putting all this together. This looks like a great task force. I would like to actually put my name in the hat as well. I mean, I think Member Wink, Member Stone would both be great as well. I have some interest in this as well with my work on Change the Trend and how the police department currently works in the community, and would love to be able to represent those issues on the committee as well. I don't know how that decision would be made, but I I certainly, I certainly would like to have input on this committee as well. So I just wanted to throw my name in the hat, and we could I don't know how to figure that out, but I I love the idea of the committee and would love to be a part of it as well.
All right. Councilmember Wink.
Thanks, Mayor. Great point, Member Anderson. And under membership on the outline for the task force creation, there is a bullet suggesting three stakeholders in the community, such as All Health Network, Swedish, Change the Trend as members, as well as members of community, in addition to three residents, perhaps outside of that group, in case you may have missed it. But, yeah, good points.
All of the meetings would have to be posted, and we'd have to decide whether they had to be why, we just have to be posted, I guess. We just have to look at what the what the guidelines would be if all three of you were on. Even if, even if Member Anderson was representing Change the Trend or something else, he's still a council member.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting to be there as a representative of Change the Trend, but as a council member. I do think Change the Trend would also, you know, would would need representation on there as well.
Yeah. I I guess I don't mind if all three are on. Maybe the manager and the attorney should think through what the and the chief, what kind of impact that would have. I certainly don't mind that. And we, there were times when I've been in council where we've had three people be on some committees. We had a, we had a two-year committee with them. Then then Member Jefferson and Mayor Woodward and Member Jill Wilson and working on the on the comp plan because we didn't want to put money out to do a comp plan. They were doing it themselves, and it took forever, and they had meetings nonstop, and they would report back to us. I don't, it was fine. So I don't mind that. If anybody else has a problem with this, I speak up. I don't know, Member Russell, if that bothers you at all, or Mayor Protem Sierra, if it bothers you at all. Doesn't look like it. All right, Member Wink.
I just think in terms of perception, and, you know, as you've just mentioned, Mayor, we've we've had instances where three council members have been discussing business publicly before. Seems like some of the citizens, well, we can't control everything. Never mind, I retract the statement, and thank you.
We just would have to post it. All right. So let's let's leave it with the manager, with Manager Lewis, to figure out sort of how we'd go forward with that. And and then I think council would just like to have, hear a report every week and what the progress is, if there is any. I mean, if you don't have anything to report, you don't have anything to report.
We can do that.
Great. Thank you. Anything else, Manager Lewis?
No, that's all.
Wonderful. City attorney's report.
Report this evening.
No report? All right. All right. I'd say that this should, this this meeting can be adjourned, and let's do this. Let's all all agree from council, say aye. Aye? Anybody not want to adjourn? All right. Great. Thanks, everybody, for your time. And we will see you next week. Have a good rest of the week.
See you.